Allo, music.
I got a taste of freedom. Now I just can't go back into the cage.
You're either gonna work with the Italians, or you're gonna fight them.
I'll repeat mine.
I was down to talk to my doctor about rebelsis.
Ask your healthcare provider about rebelsis today.
We're going to the south, we're going to Rome.
Add Portugal to your trip. Book a Portugal stopover and discover two destinations for the price of one.
I wanted my hepatitis C gone.
I put off treating mine.
Epclosa treats all main types of chronic Hep C. Whatever your type, Epclosa could be your kind of cure.
I just found out about mine.
I knew for years.
Epclosa has a 98% overall cure rate.
I had no symptoms of hepatitis C.
Mine caused liver damage.
Epclosa is only one pill, once a day, taken with or without food for 12 weeks. Before starting Epclosa, your doctor will test if you have had hepatitis B, which may flare up and could cause serious liver problems during and after treatment. Tell your doctor if you have had hepatitis B, other liver or kidney problems, HIV or other medical conditions, and all medicines you take, including herbal supplements. Taking amiodarone with Epclosa may cause... Taking amiodarone with Epclosa may cause...
Hello?
Mild or spicy?
Spicy.
Lab or piddle? Backroads or highways?
Back.
At Fall with a Shine, it all starts with a choice, and then you love.
Good evening and welcome, everyone. This meeting for the Hayward Unified School District Board of Education is now called to order. Today is Wednesday, February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, and the time is six forty-three. We are live streaming on YouTube. The URL for YouTube live streaming may be found on the HUSD Board of Trustees webpage. Item D one, Announcement of Interpretation Services. Ms. Rodriguez, would you and Ms. Kaisada make the announcement, please?
Thank you. And I'd like to apologize to the community. We've been experiencing technical difficulties this evening. Hopefully, those matters have been resolved. If you are appearing by Zoom, take a look at your toolbar. You'll look for the globe and select for Spanish if you'd like to hear this meeting in Spanish. If you happen to be a panelist, please select for English so that the dedicated audio splitter can function as expected. If you're here in the building and you'd like to take advantage of hearing this meeting being performed in Spanish, we do have audio devices that you can use that our translation team has ready, or you can use your personal device. If you are using your personal device such as your cellphone, it would be that you have a headset, and you can log into Zoom on your phone using the same toolbar. If you are using a personal device here and you need the visitor Wi-Fi, our password is the word CONSIDER, all in lowercase, C-O-N-S-I-D-E-R. And then again, for the hearing impaired, we do have the English captions on the Zoom platform. Señor Quesada, por favor.
Si, buenas tardes y gracias al público que se ha conectado con nosotros en esta tarde. Ya está habilitado el canal de audio por medio de Zoom. Puede seleccionar en la barra de herramientas el lenguaje de su preferencia. Si está asistiendo en persona, también puede usar su dispositivo personal o puede venir acá atrás con sus servidores. Podemos darle dispositivos para acceder la interpretación. Si está usando su propio dispositivo y necesita la contraseña para el internet inalámbrico, la palabra es, la palabra CONSIDER, C-O-N-S-I-D-E-R. Una vez más, C-O-N-S-I-D-E-R. Gracias.
Board President, you have the floor.
Item D two, Board Roll Call. Ms. Rodriguez.
Trustee Prada.
Present.
Trustee Roudin.
Here.
Clerk Ramos.
Here.
Vice President Dr. Okenda.
Here.
Board President Buffete.
Present.
Mount Eden High School, Kamari Lewis.
Present.
Hayward High School, Anna Tran. Do see her logged in online. Anna Tran. She might be having trouble with her microphone. Board President, you have the floor.
Okay, moving on to item D four, call for, oh, sorry, D three, land acknowledgement. I believe we have trustee Prada who's going to read that for us tonight.
The Trustee School Board respectfully acknowledges the original peoples of the lands on which our campuses are built. For thousands of years and hundreds of generations, the Chilquenyo people actively steward these lands to ensure that they provide it for all living things. This land on which our district was established was and continues to be of significant to the Muekma Aloni tribe. Today, we acknowledge the impact that colonization had on the Chilquenyo and Muekma nation and recognize our responsibility to help them heal from this history and secure a sustainable future.
Item D four, all for and collect public speaking. As this meeting is accessible online, we'd like to remind everyone that because some viewers are watching this meeting online via YouTube, there may be a twenty-five second video delay when we call for public speaking, board members and cabinet. Please expect that this delay, please expect that delay in responses from the, from the public. And I will go ahead and read the clerk script for tonight. What do you get? Okay, sorry, trustee Ramos, I think he does have the script, so. The agenda for every regular board meeting provides an opportunity for members of the public to address the board on any item of interest providing the subject matter is within the jurisdiction of the board. The jurisdiction of the board includes the authority to hire, fire, and evaluate its only employee, the superintendent, as well as the authority to set the school's direction and goals, curriculum, budget, and policy. This board will also hear comments regarding matters that fall under the scope of the superintendent. Public comments that are sort of, of that sort are welcome in this forum. Meanwhile, the public is prohibited by the Brown Act from having a discussion with the speaker or trustees during this segment of the meeting, since the topic would not be on the agenda, and so the public would not have been properly notified in advance, nor have any opportunity to also be heard on that matter. Accordingly, board members may only respond briefly. An example would be to ask the superintendent to comment on what has been heard or ask a clarifying question to comprehend what has just been said and not to further examine the matter. Please note that staff does capture comments made by the public that we require follow-up, and the board does expect the superintendent will address the issue and update the board appropriately. For each individual speaker, two minutes of speaking time is allowed. Speaker time cannot be granted over to another speaker to elongate that person's time. As two agendas items, procedurally, speaker requests on any agenda item will not be accepted after the item has been opened for discussion by the board. Individual speakers shall be allowed one single appearance per agenda item to address the board. In keeping with board governance and policies, we have asked that the speakers be muted and time discontinued if their commentary does not adhere to the rules, including staying on the topic of the agenda being presented. Thank you. Okay, that concludes item D, uh, let's see, D four. Item D five, report actions taken by the board during closed session. Interim Superintendent Chin Wu Fernandez.
Thank you, President Buffete. There were no actions taken by the board today in closed session.
Item D six, approve the order of the agenda. Maybe we have a motion to approve the order of the agenda.
I'll move it.
Moved by Vice President Dr. Okenda. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second by Clerk Ramos. Any deliberation? Okay, I'll go and call for the vote to approve the order of the agenda. All those in favor? All those opposed? We have a five-zero vote. Moved by Vice President Dr. Okenda and seconded by Clerk Ramos. And now, looks like we're going to move on to our special feature E, but before we move on to our special feature, I want to take a moment to acknowledge the life and the passing of Alameda County Supervisor Richard Vaia. Supervisor Richard Vaia was a fixture in our HUSD community, supporting our efforts like Measure H and the Adult Schools Raising Leaders Program. He recently hosted a Science in the Park event and an Are You Smarter Than a Fifth Grader contest that some of our board members got to participate in. Richard was a great supporter of children and families, and he supported HUSD in many ways, championing health and behavioral health services and newcomer support. The list of his contributions is lengthy, and our community already misses him. As his regular breakfasts were aptly named, he was one of the good guys. Our condolences and respects to his family during this time, and we'd like to take a moment of silence. Please, so everyone could, please bow your heads in the moment of silence. Item E, Families United Conference. Interim Superintendent Chin Wu Fernandez.
Yes, thank you. Recently, we had our first annual Family United Conference. It was a great kickoff, and today we'll have Sabrina Aranda, our Director of Student Parent Support Programs, and Yulita Peña, our Coordinator of Parent Engagement, to come forward with a team that actually helped us plan this conference and give us a little update.
Thank you, Ms. Fernandez. As Ms. Fernandez stated, my name is Sabrina Aranda. I'm the Director of Student Parent Support Programs, and I support our newcomers' family engagement and the community schools' efforts in our district. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Cabinet Members, our student board members, and the Hayward Committee watching this evening. I'm very proud and honored to welcome to this stand Yulita Peña, who is the fearless coordinator of Student and Parent Support Programs leading our family engagement efforts. And before she kicks off the presentation, I do want to state that we have handed out the programs that were provided to our parents and families the day of the conference for your reference throughout the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Sabrina. I, at this time, would like to bring up Ana Navidad and Lani Yamido to also introduce themselves.
Hi, Ana Navidad. She, her.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Lani Yamido. I'm a parent ambassador with six school site clusters under my leadership, I would say, and seven fellow parent ambassadors. I'm very thrilled and happy to be here.
So thank you both for being here today. They're co-presenting to me today on the Families United Conference that we just had on January twenty-eighth. So we're here to just share a little bit about the journey and, and an update on where we landed come January twenty-eighth. Next slide, please. So just a little bit about how the conference even came to be. We had quite a long journey leading up to the conference. We had six planning committee meetings where we brought together members of the community, including parent leaders, to bring parent voice as we came up with the structure that we wanted for the first Families United Conference. So we had six different planning sessions, you know, really working to partner with our parents to make sure that the content that we were going to be providing in relation to the workshops were really relevant to what parents were asking for. Next slide, please. So as if you see, we have fifteen different workshop topics that we offered throughout the conference that day, everything ranging from special education to budget, understanding of school and site budgets. We wanted to make sure that as we were coming up with the different topics of the conference, listening to what parents were voicing as important topics, that we were also making sure to keep in mind the board priorities, alignment with our HUSD strategic plan, really looking at relationship-centered schools, family engagement, and what the evidence practices are telling us work, right, which is listening to what the voices of our parents have to say. And as you'll get to hear from them, you know, a lot of what we were hearing from parents that day was that we thought of every topic that we could, you know, offer to parents. You know, again, if they were looking to learn about ways to advocate for their children in special education, or if they want to learn more about different ways that they can get involved in the parent committees at their school side or at the district level, we had those opportunities to offer, and a lot of those were led by our own parents, you know, to speak to their own experience. we had those opportunities to offer, and a lot of those were led by our own parents, you know, to speak to their own experiences. Next slide, please. So our goal as a committee, this was a goal set by our committee, was to have 500 parents attend. We had seating for, I think, about 500, 520. So while our actual numbers are 400 parents and 130 students, and if you were there, the house was packed. So I'm pretty sure we probably missed a couple parents getting signed in, but we had a very full house throughout the event. And, and again, when we were thinking about how we were going to bring this conference to life, we really wanted to make sure that we are providing opportunities for meaningful and engaging discussion on a variety of topics, really focused on what are the best ways, what are the best tools and strategies that we can equip our parents with, that they can use at home, and that they could work in partnership with school staff to better support their students and their success. Next slide, please. So one of the incentives that we gave to schools was three different levels of incentive. $900, $600, and $300 incentive that they could use towards family engagement activities at their school site as a way to bolster support for outreach to families and getting families to the conference. So we're excited to announce the winners for the first year. This year, we have Burbank Elementary, Faith Ringgold, and Stone Gray Elementary School as our winners this year. And what we did was base it off of the parents that actually attended per school, but also tying it to the enrollment at the school site, so that it also allowed some opportunity for our smaller schools. But, you know, oftentimes, you know, try and try and try, but they don't always get the main win. So as you can see, we have some large school winners and some smaller school winners. So we're really excited and to see what they'll do with their funding to be able to lead again some, some family engagement activities at their school site with the funds. Next slide. And so with that, I want to give both Lani and Anna an opportunity to, again, share a little bit about their experiences leading up to the conference and, and also the day of. So without further ado, then take it over.
Thank you. My experiences were amazing. I have to say, thank you for the team, for the, for the staff here at Hayward. We were heard. Every time we brought a subject, they understood us or tried to understand what we meant when we said we would like these topics. So thank you to all the team. I'm so very happy that we were heard getting this program, this conference started. And my experience with it was amazing. I loved working with our co-partners to make sure we get our families what they want to hear. I've asked families, I tried to ask everybody that I knew to see what they want to have in this conference, and we did. I also wanted to share with you that I was very proud to be in a panel with Ms. Lani Sun at the, at the actual conference. When we came in, we were so excited, you know, the families get to know each other. By the way, I think this group made it into a family. We have become very close, and we hoping that this will continue from years to come to have it again. So at the conference, we have our families, we had everything working at great. I also liked that parents were able to choose what they wanted to, to hear and learn. And once we got into our each classrooms, I was lucky to have a panel for LGBTQ A+ involved in the speakers. So I was able to meet Queen, which was the president from Hayward High GSA, and also the vice president, Amon. And so I had made connections with them through this topic, and they have invited me to be part of their club. So I'm going every Thursday there, and I'm supporting them to making some changes. So Mr. Miller, I hope you're listening to us. We will invite him for our next meeting, which would be on, on a Thursday. And, and we have set goals to hopefully, things would change at the school site of what the kids share with us, what they want to have changed. And then hopefully in the future, once we get that started, we can come to all of you so we can get it through the district. And at the same time, I was able to meet parents where they shared their phone numbers, so I contact them. So now we have a parent group also that we are starting, hopefully, a new club for parents with LGBTQ Club. And I just was talking downstairs, so she's my new member. So I'm looking forward to it, and it was everything positive. The best part of this is when we were able to share with our parents. Parents cried, and they felt they were, they're not alone, that they have somebody that they can talk to. They have somebody that can give them a little bit of guidance. I'm not perfect, like I say. But just to share with them to say, ask your kids, I think sometimes we just don't realize. But once they heard our, our talk and, you know, our input, it went very well. So for me, it's a great experience, and I have to give a shout out to Robert Lopez. He's helping us at the GSA Club at the Hayward High. And the teacher there, Ms. Gudal, she's giving us a space to have this meeting. So thank you for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Anna. The Families United Conference did not only, or was not only able to give us a chance to meet parents, we were able to find allies. Yeah, like Anna. So for me, I, I was a part of the planning committee and also a part of the presenter and also a parent. So as a member of the planning committee, I should say that every minute that I spent with my fellow parent ambassadors, they're here with us right now, worth it. Our ideas, our visions, our suggestions and opinions were not only heard, but also acknowledged. And our vision were put into action, and we, we saw how effective and impactful, impactful that the vision of the parents are. And as a member of the presenter, I felt valued because I was with a group of school counselors, psychologists, coordinators. But then they gave me the floor to share my experience as a parent. We discussed the, our session is, was about the transition or helping our kids during transition from middle school to high school. And I do have, I do have, I do have an experience about that. So they heard me. And the most beautiful part about it is that, was that I saw parents coming in the session room really early with their children, with their kids, and they're excited to know how they can help their kids in this very tricky transition from middle school to high school. We didn't have, actually never had enough time. We, we want probably second batch of that upper school site we're planning about that. So we felt how, how thirsty the parents are when it comes to that specific topic. And thirdly, one of the extra special part of me being in that conference is, was as a parent. It was extra special because I was able to be, to enjoy it and experience it with my child, who was one of the panelists in Anna's session. And if he's listening right now, I am so proud of you, Kim. So that is my extra special experience in the United Conference, and I don't see any reason why we can't have it next year. So thank you so much.
So, next slide, please. So as you can see, our families enjoy themselves. We had a great meal. We had great activities and shows and projects that everybody enjoyed. Everything just turned out amazing. I'm so proud of everybody that came out. Thank you for coming out. And just for you to be there, it shows me that you are able to be open to hear how can you best help your children. To me, I bow to the parents that came to it. Hopefully, next year, we have more parents and more families that joins us. But it was amazing watching the shows. We are actually planning already downstairs what we can do for next year, having a multicultural show from each school. It's, you know, to have more things, fun things for the parents to do while they have their lunch. So I was just overwhelmed with seeing how many families were there and kids having fun, and I just loved everything. Thank you.
And, and in addition to that, we also would like to appreciate, we do, we deeply appreciate the district, the, the city, the local, the college, and the university, the university leaders about their vision and commitment to making Hayward an education city. As a parent, to hear this message means, means quality and equitable education for all. Families and students' strong engagement in initiatives and programs with regards to education or towards education. And, and above all, I know that this will lead to a sustainable opportunity for students who are made in Hayward.
Next slide, please. So just a little bit about what parents had to say. We had different workshops, obviously, that we offered throughout the conference, and we had exit surveys at the end of each of the sessions. So this is just some of the, you know, messages that we were getting in the feedback survey, you know, just as Anna was mentioning, right, realizing it wasn't just me as a parent that goes through this with my child, but more parents. I'm not alone. Todo fue excelente. Everything was excellent. Thank you for the workshop. It'll help me with my kids. You know, so these are just some of the comments that we heard in our feedback surveys. Next slide. And, you know, again, this is an opportunity to highlight all the, you know, individuals that made this happen, our family engagement specialists at all of our school sites. We could not do this work without them, continuing to provide that outreach and engagement at the site level and helping to bring families to the conference. So we really appreciate their efforts. We had 60 staff that day working the event. Several high school volunteers. So we see, you know, a lot of high school and CSU East Bay volunteers, various partner agencies, La Familia, who's, who's here with us tonight, Project Eden Side by Side, CSU East Bay, right, Hayward Promise Neighborhoods, a lot of our different partners there, and over 33 different individuals that helped to present at the conference, from staff to parents, to students, to our partner agencies, all of our donors, right, that helped to give us exciting giveaways that parents enjoyed. And hopefully, we'll have some fun experiences at Disney on Ice Warriors games with their families. Our Dr. Monique Walton, who was our emcee for the day, and a big shout out to YEP. They were really essential in providing some fun activities for students at the event. And, you know, all of the leadership from Chin to our local college and university and city leadership that was, helped make the day possible. Next slide. And a big thank you to our planning committee. So again, it's been quite a journey to get us to January. But all these individuals played a role in helping to bring this conference to what it was. And some of our members are here with us tonight showing their support, so we really appreciate them. If you're part of the committee, please do stand so to be recognized. Thank you. Next slide, please. So with that, we'll open it up to any questions or comments.
I'll go ahead and open it up. I had the pleasure of attending that conference, and I just want to say how thoroughly impressed I was with the operation. I mean, I, you go in, you check in, you get your badge, you know, it, it had all the, the features of all the conferences I've ever attended in my life. And it just, it was amazing to see the engagement that we were seeing in the community, how many parents, and, you know, where we had parents running the sessions, we had parents attending the sessions. We saw them as students loitering in the hallways between sessions. You know, it was just, it was great to see that atmosphere that we built, and then to have it driven by, by parents and by our community and what you wanted to hear with the program. I, I just thought it was just one of the best, best experiences, best days I've had in a long time. So thank you so much to everyone who made it happen. I know a lot of work went into it because of the coordination and all, and all the moving pieces that were happening. It was just so impressive, and it was really one of the best things I've ever seen here, when Unified put out there. And I, I am committed to making sure that this does happen next year and, and bigger. So thank you so much for all your work. Any other comments, Pordon?
I also attended and thoroughly enjoyed the conference, and I'm happy that this is our annual conference, that we'll be back. And I just really want to give a special shout out to, to the students. There is like four students, and it was a second session, and so they changed the, the model of the session. Peter and I attended it together, and it was, it was, at that time, it was just the two of us. And so it became a listening session. So the students told us exactly what they needed, what type of support they needed, what their visions was for their, for their education, what it felt like at times to be unseen and unheard. And, and so that really, really was one of the most impactful sessions. I enjoyed. We, we bounced between a lot of sessions. We tried to hit up everyone. But that one right there really, really touched my heart, and I, I love hearing directly from the students on how we as a community can support them. So I just want to say thank you. I know a lot of hard work went into it. I'm excited for next year. And this is definitely the path that we need to be on.
I just want to say thank you so much to everyone who put in hard work to make this happen. And it just is so touching to hear you say that you were heard and valued, and that is what I know our families have been wanting from our district. And so it just is really heartwarming to hear that that was your experience and that the students and families all worked together with our staff to make this happen. And yes, I agree, our first annual family conference. So thank you all so much.
Trustee Rudden.
I just have to echo everything that I've heard my fellow board members say. I really do. I feel like I arrived late to the party, literally, because I had gone to another event that morning as a board member. And so I came shortly after lunch, and I'm like, walk, I walked in, and it was like, what is going on? All these people, and it was really exciting to see what you were doing. And then, you know, when I looked at the program and I see the people who organized it, why would I expect anything different from Sabrina and Yulita? I remember you from back in the day. You were always a go-getter, so it was, it was very exciting. And, and to see the parents engaged too. So I just, really, Lani and Anna, thank you for sharing tonight about that, because it was really a great event. I, I want to say to those parents that were a part of it, stay engaged in it. As your students progress and get older, and they go into middle school, and maybe they don't want mom and dad around so much anymore, and they're like, oh, mom, you don't need to go to that. Don't listen to them. Go to everything. Be that parent, be that engaged parent, because I know the difference that it makes in a kid's life. So bravo. Thank you. Yes, yes, yes. And you all made friends, and you're, like you said it yourself, your lifelong friends around something like this. And I couldn't help but think, at the same time, I'm looking at it, thinking, wow, a year from now, they can do this in our new performing arts center. Yeah.
Clerk Ramos.
Thank you very much, President Befetti. I myself was like 10. I came in on his, on his coattails at the end, but I was really impressed because I had wished I had seen the, the brochure. I really would have been there on time, early. It basically was an example of two things, of leadership. It basically was an example of two things, of leadership and the parents and teamwork. And I know just the beginning, that next year I'll be there early and I'm looking forward to it. Cause I know many of you are going to rise up to the occasion, you're going to develop your leadership skills and you're going to also help your kids, they're going to see you as an example. Thank you all who came, God bless you and we look forward to you next time.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Coach, uh super, uh interim superintendent, Will Fernandez.
I can help it out, I'm sorry, I have to ask something. Um I just want to extend my sincere appreciation for the parents that planned this particular event. Um I do want to note that we have great leaders in Hayward, our parents are no exception to that. And I said it at the conference, I'll, I'll repeat it here. Um I, we talk about parent engagement nationally, all over the place. And I do believe we have a unique model in Hayward in that our parents are the leaders of the work that we're doing. Um and we are, we're simply creating space and containers to have, for us to have conversations and allocating resources for us to make things happen. But really, the ha- the conference happened because of all of you. Thank you very much.
Another round of applause for our parents here. Uh thank you again so much. That was, that was really lovely. Um uh we are going to move on to item F, uh reports and commentary. Uh F1 is student board member comments. We'll start with uh Leona Arribas.
On, buddy.
I'm going to go ahead and move on to uh Kamari Lewis.
Good evening to the board, the HSD community, the student trustees here tonight. My name is Kamari Lewis, I represent the Monarchs at Mount Eden High School and tonight I'll be giving a brief overview of our recent events. Last week was Spirit Week for the Monarchs. Monday was Twin Day, Tuesday was Dress As Your Type. On Wednesdays, we're pink. On Thursday, the Monarchs wore anything but a backpack and on Friday, we threw it back to the early two thousands for Two Thousand Day. Each day of Spirit Week corresponded with a class rally, starting with our two oh two six freshmen and ending with our twenty twenty-three graduating seniors. Last Wednesday and the Wednesday prior, the Monarchs celebrated our Monarch and Lady Monarchs basketball seniors in their senior night games against Saint Joe's Notre Dame and the Ensonel Jets. We would also like to recognize our Monarch cheerleaders for always attending our games, hyping up our crowds and showing us what it really looks like to have Monarch pride. Last Friday, our Monarch basketball team swept the court in a rivalry game against the Hayward High Farmers. Our JV boys were victorious with a fifty-five forty-seven final score and Varsity took us home with a sixty-six fifty-eight win. Yesterday, our Monarch avid coordinator, Mr. Tyler Tome, avid teacher, Ms. Tausland Kimball, and avid counselor, Mr. John Zetner, took our avid scholars on their second and final college tour of the year. The scholars went over to UC Berkeley and got to learn some cool facts, view one of Cal's many lecture halls inside of the Berkeley Law Building, interview current Cal students and even got a chance to roll down four point O Hill. For one night only, Mount Eden Leadership is proud to present a Night of Hollywood Dreams. On Saturday, April twenty-ninth, Mount Eden's, Mount Eden's finest will come together at the Tech Museum of Innovation in San Jose for Prom twenty twenty-three. We'll have a catered buffet, a three sixty photo booth and so much more. We can't wait to see all of our upperclassmen on the red carpet. Last night, our Mount, our Mount Eden basketball team hosted Clayton Valley at home for the first round playoffs of the Division One NCS Championships. Although we were not victorious, we would like to congratulate our boys and our Lady Monarchs on another amazing and well-played season. We also want to thank our pledge for keeping your heads held high throughout the trials and tribulations that the season has put before you. To our principal, Dr. Monique Walton, athletic director, Mr. Gary Duran, and athletic administrator, Mr. George Metropolis, I would like to personally thank you for supporting not only our basketball team, but all of our sports and the athletes who go above and beyond to play them while continually to show the true meaning of Monarch magic. Furthermore, on behalf of myself, Mount Eden High School and the entire athletic department, we would like to once again thank our public address announcer and my father, Mr. Hassan Lewis, for being, for being with and standing for the Monarchs when we needed you the most. Mount Eden thanks you for being such a huge part of our athletics. You continue, your continued support both on the court as an announcer and off the court as my father is greatly appreciated and I look forward to doing it again next year. So quote, to quote Mr. Duran, once a monarch, always a monarch. That's all I have for this week. Please remember, you can hide the Monarch pride.
Thank you so much, Kamari.
Great. Thank you, Aaron. Really appreciate it. Um good evening to the board, um those student trustee and the Hayward community. Um I'll be um giving a brief presentation about some things that are happening at Tennyson. Black History Month is an opportunity for all to come together to acknowledge, appreciate and admire the immeasurable contributions of Africans from all over the world on human culture and life. Tennyson's Black Student Union created a way for the student body at Tennyson to participate in this year's celebration of Black History Month through organizing a Black History Month Spirit Week. At home in America, it's important to recognizing calculable impact African-American creativity, innovation and thought has had on our lives today. This is why I think um this week full of events held by BSUs is important to share about. And so there is a poster of um some of the events that are happening this week. I believe that there are also lunchtime events happening. I think tomorrow during lunch, there'll be a family feud about um important um African-American um writers and scholars and and trivia of that kind. Next, please. Tennyson was lucky to be the first secondary school in the district to undergo a well-deserved facilities refresh. The first construction phase started promptly with our um return from the winter closure in January. This first construction phase included the refresh of our E-Hall, which holds one restroom for males and females. Now, Tennyson students presently have access to two restrooms for their respective gender on campus. These are our Steam Hall Restrooms and our Sea Hall Restrooms. Although there are restrooms inside our cafeteria, they're only available to students during lunch, which lasts about thirty minutes, and nutrition break, which lasts twenty. Because cafeteria doors remain locked outside of these breaks. Steam Hall Restrooms are used almost exclusively by students in the Steam Hall and the newest exception are students from the former E-Hall, currently housing portable restrooms behind the Steam Hall. For reference, the Steam Hall is located on one side of campus where halls A, B, C, D and F and S sequentially follow with P Hall establishing the campus's end opposite of Steam Hall. The closing of E-Hall has created a multitude of issues when it comes to bathroom uses for students at Tennyson. For starters, if students are located in P Hall or S Hall and needed to you uh use the restroom during class, then they have to walk all the way across campus to Sea Hall. It's a long walk that takes too much instructional time away from students simply trying to use the restroom. That alone is a significant issue, but it's not even the short of it. Because at any given time, male and female student populations that aren't in the Steam Hall or the portable classroom hall have access to only one restroom. So not only does that long run to the restroom during class become difficult, taking at least ten minutes for so many students, that during passing periods and often lunch and nutrition breaks, it becomes inexcusably difficult for an individual to use the restroom because of the sheer density of other students that also need to use the restroom. And um so there is a chart from um the California Department of Education that um shows the ratio of toilets um to male or female students. And presently, um Tennyson has fifteen hundred roughly students enrolled and um says that there should be a toilet for every fifty male students and a toilet for every thirty female students and that just isn't what's happening at Tennyson right now. Um and those are just minimum state requirements, which are, are as noted in the um second point under that note. That is also from the California Department of Education. Additionally, um these facilities should also be spread across campus to ensure easy access, which is also failing to happen at Tennyson. Next slide, please. And could you imagine if one restroom that hundreds of human beings, also known as students, depend on with two to three stalls or urinals and or urinal, urinals, had any such restroom apparatus out of order or broken? Could you imagine how much more complicated and unfair it would be for students? Do you imagine trying to use the restroom and trying to get to class in time while dozens of others are trying to do the same thing at once with only one restroom facility available? Well, consider yourself privileged, being only able to imagine such things because this is the reality students at Tennyson fear facing or do face every day. And if it is the case, which sometimes it has, according to many of my male and female peers, that stallocks don't work, toilet is out of order and or urinal is out of order, think about how more difficult using the restroom becomes for students. But don't just take it from me. Take it from those students who have to walk across campus to use the bathroom and that are usually quiet when it comes to student government, but have actually been coming to student government meetings, like our executive council meetings to share about how they feel and it's briefly recorded in our minutes um just a couple of weeks ago. Take it from those students who have to cram themselves into bathrooms daily. Take it from those administrators and campus security officers that have to stand in restrooms to supervise horses of students. Enough is enough. I've been in contact with the district maintenance department through my administration for the last few weeks. So what I'd really like to know, along with um the many students that trust me to represent them, is what the district's plan is to get students at Tennyson the facilities that we need. That concludes presentation.
Thank you, Leon. Um I'll allow the staff to uh have a response to that presentation.
Uh yes, this is um uh this is definitely a concern we're going, we're uh looking at it and we'll provide an update to uh students and staff so then there's clarity around how we're moving forward to address the concern.
And um can I ask to what the um that you include in that update, a plan on uh when you do have construction, what does that look like as far as the impact on the students when you close down buildings for construction? Um I just want to make sure that there's a little bit more productivity in the future with this modification.
Uh correct, that um there'll be a plan associated for each phase of construction, not just at Tennyson, but across all the sites.
Thank you. I'll definitely be waiting for that because the last thing I wanted to do is to mention this at tonight's meeting because optimistically about two weeks ago or three weeks ago, when I started talking with um our AM assistant principal, Mr. Taylor, um about um communicating with um the appropriate su- assistant superintendents at the district. I was like, no, this is going to be solved quick. You know, there's no, I I can't imagine that I'm going to have to mention this at our February fifteenth meeting and yet here I am. So I mean, the disappointment is really immeasurable and so we'll definitely be awaiting that information um definitely patiently as we have. Thank you.
Yeah, I can assure you, we'll, we'll have, we'll have a follow-up. Great. So thank you. Um I think our last student trustee is Anna Tran from Hayward.
Anna is traveling right now on a bus with Hayward High students, so the uh situation might be not great for internet. Yeah.
I think with that, um uh we can go ahead and proceed to board member comments and if uh she does return, we can always circle back uh to her presentation. So uh first, I'll move us to item F three, or actually, sorry. I'll move to public comment. Um and then we can always include her in the uh item F three. So uh F two is public comments for items not appearing on the agenda. Uh board bylaws allow up to one hour of public comment. This time is designated for subject matters within our jurisdiction that are not on this evening's agenda. The hour for non-agendai is public comment is split into two periods, one segment at the beginning of the meeting for forty-five minutes and the other period at the end of the meeting for fifteen minutes. Any speakers unable to speak, speak in the first segment either due to the forty-five minute expiration or due to late arrival may be heard in the latter fifteen minute period set aside at the end of the meeting. We have any uh public speakers? Uh Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, we have in-person and online speakers. Our first three in-person speakers will be Taylor Mays, Sabrina Aranda and Manny Flores. Taylor Mays, if you haven't been here before, when you get up to the microphone, there's two buttons and one of them looks like a little person. When you push that button, your microphone will turn red and that means it's working.
Good evening Superintendent Will Fernandez and Board of Education members. My name is Taylor Mays. I'm a seventh grader at Wynton Middle School. I'm also an honor roll student doing both cheerleading and playing basketball as well as flacodico. I just want to tell you guys that I love my mother. I wouldn't be doing so good in school if it wasn't for all her hard work and support. She's an amazing mom. I also want to tell you that it hurts me to see her when she's sick or when she feels she doesn't have enough money to get care for the things she needs. It makes me sad and I wish I was old enough to help her financially. I think she really deserves to have proper healthcare. I want a mom to be around for a long time, but I know she sometimes chooses me and my needs above paying for care for herself. Please consider helping my mommy and anyone else who works here and needs it. Thank you for your time.
Sabrina Aranda?
Good evening, Board of Trustees, Cabinet and Hayward Community. As you all know, my name is Sabrina Aranda and I'm a proud Hayward community member, Hayward alum and also a proud auntie of two Hayward Unified School District students. I just wanted to take the time to um first, I wanted to congratulate the Hayward High Girls Basketball Team as they are currently starting their game five minutes ago. And Aranda and they are, have made it to the NCS and my niece is number fifteen. As a freshman varsity basketball player, we're very proud of her and I wanted to give a shout out to our Hayward High Farmers um Girls Basketball Team. I also wanted to take the time to inform our public about some of the exciting things that we have forthcoming. Our Parent University will start off our spring classes on March fourth, the Parent Resource Center hub. These are family classes, two-generation approach classes. And we have canvas art, painting, reggae club, ballet, flauta and also yoga. And so these are classes, again, that parents have to take with their children and enrollment is now open and you can find that with the Parent University logo located on our front website. You can also um mark your calendars right now as we have our Sullivan Arts Center Schools and Committee, which is going to take place on April twenty-eighth and we're really excited to be with the university this year at Burbank Elementary School, which is our number one winners for the Families Conference. And I also just wanted to take the time to, in my comments this evening, to just really to just really thank our interesting superintendent for her vision because it was her vision for us to have the families who met at conference and to address the needs and support of our families and their voices. And so I wanted to acknowledge her leadership this evening. And also to say that everything that we did was through the parents from the name of the conference to the conference flyers. That's how Princess got her photo on that front conference flyer. And even between, and also want to acknowledge our HUSD staff, email from Ellen Guard to Dr. Gibbons to channel the numbers of the meal that evening or that day.
Manny Flores?
Twenty ninth.
I guess for those that didn't hear at home, the date is April twenty ninth.
Hey, good evening, Mr. Chairman, fellow board members, Madam Clerk. My name is Manny Flores. I'm a parent educator at MLK. Been there a couple of years and I just want to give caduce to the staff that I work for. You know, I'm an old guy, been around a long time and I enjoy working with the kids there. And they're kids, you know, and I enjoy it. And they need some guidance, like all of us do, but I enjoy working there. I mean, that's a hard staff. They work hard. And I'm just giving caduce especially to the parents and the staff that work there. I've been there close to, wow, four years. And the kids are great, you know, and they're kids. But we help them any way we can. We're there for them, you know? And we listen to them and we talk to them. And that's important. And that's what I do there. And that's what we all do there. I can speak and it goes without saying with the staff, starting, you know, with the principal and everybody. You know, I heard, you know, bad things going across about the school now. They're good, they're hard and it's tough and it's challenging, but we're all there for the challenging. That's my parents who say, go, you go and help. That's what I'm there for. Thank you.
Our next three speakers are Princess, Charles Jones, and Zoe.
Hi, everyone. Parent participation has been one of the core guide in building relationship in this district. On January twenty eighth, it was great to see the turnout of parents with diverse backgrounds that came to the Families United Conference. What made this work? We had the various topics, programs, committees that were brought up and discussed. The conference showed what happened when the community came together. I asked few parents of African descent what they thought about the conference. They truly loved it with one saying, she would love to be part of the Parent Ambassador Program. Simply put, we should continue with this tradition. This is not about funding because it is part of parent engagement, which is one of the H cap goals. This fits the narrative because parents and guests were able to learn new things on that day. Surveys we are giving out, this we are to get feedbacks and what we can do moving forward. Again, I hope this stays. Parent participation is vital to the success of our students. I must not forget the presence of the students, those that volunteered and those that attended. At the end of the day, it is all about them. They too were impressed with the conference. Talk about building community schools, we show are looking at one of the strategies. Finally, I leave you with this adage, Rome was not built in a day. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm tall. Hello, my name is Charles Jones. I am the social science chair at Tennyson High School and I am also a HEA union rep for that site as well. I'm here tonight because it has been over a month without repairs being done to the P Hall wing that I teach in. We had rain cause that ceiling to buckle in four different locations. And it was bad enough that you ripped out the ceiling in front of my room and left a giant hole for multiple weeks that students had to walk underneath. No caution tape, no warnings, nothing. So they were walking underneath that. And then on top of that, the others just had a hole drilled into it to drain the water without actually inspecting or checking into them to make sure that they were okay. We now have gone to the point where you have finally sealed off the ceiling where there was holes in front of my room. But that made the pigeons that were roosting in it angry. And now they chase and attack students and staff members that get too close. And my students have named them because they have been there that long. We have a new one, your class can name that one next. But the problem has become that we need something done for this. We need the grievance followed. You brought out a structural engineer, but we haven't seen the report yet from that structural engineer. When he was up in there, he did let us know that there's still water up in there, especially from the more recent rains that are happening. And the other side, and there's rust and there's rot of the wood that is going on in those areas. Our staff do not feel safe and our students don't either, especially in the not knowing what is happening. And it's not fair. Our students deserve better. This is their second home. It's a place that they see sometimes more than anywhere else. I spend more time in that classroom than I spend in my own home at this point. I decorate it more than my own house. We deserve to feel safe and in an area where we, where we feel like we belong. So we're asking you to please work on this. Spring is way too late. Spring break is way too late. There's other rainstorms coming and every time it rains, it buckles worse in front of those hallways. So we are asking you to please do something and think of a long-term plan. These are portables. The structural engineer even said it. They're twenty-five years old. Thank you.
Our next, our next three speakers are Henry Benz Jr., Letizia Zamudio, and Nicholas Williams. Henry? Henry? Moving on, Letizia Zamudio? Okay, thank you. Nicholas Williams?
How you guys doing? I just want to put something on your mind real quick. Like niggers and monkeys. I don't know if y'all heard me back there. Niggers and monkeys are what these black boys and black girls are being called on a daily basis from elementary to high school. And if you know anything about the city, one of the mottos is there's no room for racism. Any room for racism in the city? So why are we acting as if we can't do anything when it comes to our children? If you don't believe me, ask them. They'll tell you. I challenge you to go to a school and talk to your black boys and your black girls and they'll tell you. And you see the hurt on their faces, it reminds me I've been a victim. So I know what that feels like too, but I challenge you. And I challenge you to put a policy in place, something concrete. Because if there's no room in racism, no room for racism in Hayward, there's no room for it in the education system either. Please do something, not next week, not next year. Now, please, because you're destroying these black boys and girls' lives. We're going backwards. We don't have to worry about what everybody else is doing anywhere. We can do something here. There's enough diversity. There's enough people here that we can put something concrete. Or else we're in the wrong business of education if we act like we can't do anything. We all have a responsibility. So give that some thought, please.
Our next three speakers are Cory, Anna Navidad, and Elaine H. Cory? King Metal? Okay, thank you. Anna Navidad?
Hi, good evening, Anna Navidad. She heard. I just wanted to bring your attention that I appreciate that we have a new engagement parent at the Hayward High. Shout out to Hayward High, by the way. Except that the class or the room where they are, it gets hot to, to, to the point that I have to step out because you can't be there. Something needs to be done about the heater if they want parents to come and join at this room that have made for us. And also I wanted to bring something so serious for us. My child was removed from Buente at Hayward High. And I just find out the person who I have actually put a formal complaint here at the district is no longer here, except nobody has called me to tell me there's someone else in charge of your case if you need to get in touch with them. Now, as you know me, I have respect for staff and teachers and, and and everyone that helps me raise my kids. Except that in this case, it was done so wrong to where it breaks my heart. I had to bring my kid here at the district to share their experience, how they feel prior to this event, which my child actually had to go to hospital when he knew that they were going to use, they were going to use this event with that approach a teacher to ask what was wrong with him. And they used that as a way that they can remove him from this program. My child went to the hospital because they knew they were going to, the teacher was going to use this as an example to get them out. I just want to say, please look into this so somebody can help me out because I don't want my child to relive this again and again and again.
Elaine H?
I'm just here to put a face to a name. I emailed the board last October eighteenth, twenty twenty-two in regards to a bullying situation at Fair Faith Ringgold, Ringgold Elementary where my son attends. I'm standing before you again today because I've gone through the channels that the school has provided me and my son continues to be bullied at this school to the point where. So my son was threatened last night with bodily injury. I reported it to the school. I've reported it to the school where the other students attended and I was blatantly told by Dr. Givens that I am not, because I'm a parent, I am not entitled to know what the consequences or the repercussions, the, what is being told to these children and their parents. So basically, my child continues to be bullied with no repercussions whatsoever. At Faith Ringgold currently, my son has been attending. I have yet to get a report card from this school. My son has not had one report card this entire twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Something needs to be done at that school site. Thank you.
Tammy, Roselle?
Good evening. Happy Black History Month. A lot of you know me, my children went here until I removed them because, quite frankly, I didn't want any more harm done. And I'm gone and I still constantly get calls from families that look like me, black families that are hurting. And I've told HUSD time and time again, you need to apply love. I get that this is a job. I get that you come here day in and day out. I am a teacher. I'm an educator as well. I never pushed that in HUSD. I was told to go sit down, go mind my business as a parent. I shouldn't have to push around who I am or what I do in order to be heard as a parent that is hurting of children that are hurting. These families can't come here. They're broken by the system of school before they get here. And you know, the proof that this school system is hurting the children is in the numbers of the last scores. I think I memorized them right. HUSD is ninety-one points below standard in general. If you are an ELL learner, you are a hundred and forty-two points, excuse me, a hundred and fourteen points below standard. And if you are black, you are a hundred and twenty points below standard. And it falls again if you are homeless to a hundred and fifty-four points below the standard. How many times have I stood here and talked to you and begged you? How many parents like me have created businesses to come back and yet HUSD shuts us out? We want to help. We know our families are hurting. They come to us because they're hurting. This is Black History Month. We get a brief time for teachers that hate our students to briefly touch on what was wrong. And we don't even begin with the greatness that they were in Africa. Amontse Musa, the greatest man that ever had money. No one has amassed the six hundred billion dollars that he had to this day yet. We don't talk about the greatness they come from. You guys are chopping up students and families. Let the people in that can help. You're not doing it on your own. You can't figure it out.
Moving over to Zoom with the time that we have left, Lisa Marie Cusper. Your line has been unmuted.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Lisa Marie Cusper and I'm an employee benefit specialist. And I just wanted to implore to the board as you're looking at the budget, instead of setting aside funds for fines, for our, for our health plans being not affordable and setting aside.
Lisa, can you hear me?
Yes.
So we do have a budget workshop this evening, which is an agenda item. And it sounds like you're speaking to something financial. And this is the time for items that are not on the agenda? Did you want me to hold your card back for the budget?
Yes, please.
I will do that. Thank you. Our next speaker for items not appearing on the agenda, Rashida Verma. Rashida, your line's been unmuted. Can you hear me?
Um, yes, I can. Thank you. Hi, I'm Rashida and I'm a senior and member of school site council at Mount Eden High School. Anti-Semitism, a form of hate speech exists at Mount Eden High School. Teaching anti-Semitic texts such as the hidden tyranny on campus violates HUSD's race and equity policy and California Education Code two twenty that prohibits discrimination. Under the ed code, intervention is vital when students are in a learning environment that discriminates. The administration was made aware on December thirteenth and they have not yet intervened by stepping into the classroom to help students in which, under ed code two twenty, is allowed. We were informed today that staff has been directed to not use this material by the district. However, there's no accountability or evidence to demonstrate that this will result in the end of hates, would result in the end of hate speech on our campus. In just one week, multiple students have come forward to share that they are in a learning space in which their teacher performs the Hitler salute. Students are in a space with an educator who discriminates. We are asking for safe learning. We are asking for safe learning spaces for students. There's no safety when hate speech and discrimination prevail. We are asking for you to help make our school a better place by ensuring that students are in safe classrooms. Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
I can, go right ahead.
Hello, my name is Jessie Gunn, I'm a teacher at Tennyson. I originally wanted to call to talk about the P Hall and and before I do, I just wanna mention that all of the things that you're hearing tonight, issues regarding racism, antisemitism with with the way workers are treated, with the way students are treated, with the way students have access to restrooms, these are not separate issues. It has to do with the way we value how we do education. If it's not photographable, if it's not something that can be celebrated on the front page of social media, I feel like the district doesn't put as much attention to it. In regards to that, let's talk about the P Hall. It holds a special place in my heart because this temporary building was built while I was a high school student at Tennyson. And it is still standing miraculously, but I don't know for how much longer. To me, it seems like it could be a potential safety issue. We need to make sure that the district acknowledges the grievance and does something about repairing this P Hall if possible. And it has to happen before spring break. This needs to be a priority, not something pushed down the road. I'm also going to agree with student board member Julian when he mentions the restrooms. As a teacher, I understand that it's frustrating for all of us when students are out of the classroom for a long time. It's frustrating for other students when they have to. The other day, I asked a student, why were you at the restroom for so long? There was people waiting. He had to go all the way to the C Hall because the steam building restroom was closed, it was out of order. We need to do better. This is all related, it has to do with access, it has to do with equity, has to do with value education.
Miladnich? Annie?
Hi, my name is Annie Miladnich and I'm a social science teacher at Mount Eden. My presence and the presence of my students and my colleagues here tonight and all the speakers are evidence of failed leadership at our site and at the district level to investigate and address concerns around hate speech. It is discouraging and scary to have a leadership not fulfill their obligation to their credentials, board policy, ed code and morality. And to have students have to step up and do the job that adults should be doing to keep safe spaces in public schools. It has been two months of students and staff calling for action on on curriculum that is easily addressed and yet they have failed to do so. And this makes myself and the whole Mount Eden community unsafe. I hope the board will take this seriously and take action immediately and hold who is ever responsible, responsible.
LEP?
Hello, everyone. My name is LEP and I'm a parent in action for education. I thank you for, for this time for participation. And also I want to ask for their collaboration of plan for provide education for Narcan, especially for staff in high school and middle school. This is a provide prevention for emergency and information for a student. This call prevent the help the students. We have sampled the district de San Mateo that ready for implementation. So is my question for the, the staff, we have planning for prevention this part, especially for Narcan. That's an important issue and now, so all time I continue with me, the Ponte Comunitario, I'm parting in action for education for resources or any supporting, I am here. And also, I had thank you for all the staff for recruiting members. I think in this 2023, I see the list have recruiting nine people. Thank you for continuing to support the schools. It's very important to support the students and also I want to thank you for Ms. Chefer Hernandez for this time. You know, I served for District Hayward for most of one year. Thank you for a wonderful job and also I thank you for all the support for the all, the last event and family, United Families is wonderful, is the part that they changed. So I think the policy is even important for including, for inclusion of black and brown communities and and other races or multiraces for I didn't see work together for start new policies together, inspiring students and community. I think it's more important to take the time and take the, I listen to all parents. I work together is more important for, for, for resolve all issues, thank you.
Net Johnson?
Hello. My name is Annette Johnson and I'm a caregiver from Schaefer Park Elementary School. I have been concerned and frustrated about my grandson's education. He's a first grader right now, only a first grader. There have been many concerns from my family and I about the cultural competency of black students by the staff at this school. Also, there has been various subs in the classroom since December 8th. And he and his classmates are missing out on school. It feels as though my grandson is not being seen and supported. My grandson has moved from LDLI to SEI in kindergarten. And as a black student, it makes me wonder how many black students actually complete the DLI program without being pushed out. I've seen, I have sent multiple emails to all the board members as well as the superintendent and more folks around the district. How am I supposed to believe my grandson is getting the support he needs at school? If there has been little to no communication? I hope to hear from you soon to help move forward and support the wellbeing of my grandson who's only seven years old, seven. And as well as the other students in similar positions as him. Thank you so much. We need a steady teacher also. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, my name's Heather Eastwood and I'm an English teacher at Mount Eden High School. And I'm here today because Holocaust denial and antisemitic hate speech are being talked here on taxpayer salaries, on taxpayer copies in taxpayer buildings and with the full knowledge of taxpayer employees hired to protect the safety and learning of our young people and overseen by you. I'm here today to sound the alarm about the appalling silence of our administration at Mount Eden High School and at the district level as Church of Satan and Jewish takeover conspiracies are spread. Our site admin has known since at least December 13th. They claim the assistant superintendent explicitly removed the work from their control and that they've been unable to do anything since then. DO site level has not answered any of our pleas for help. You board have known since at least February 2nd, nearly two weeks ago, and have not responded either. My complaint here today is with our admin that have done nothing to remedy the situation. Our department has gotten no support as we struggle to address the antisemitism. They've done, done nothing to address the harm caused to us as people and professionals forced to work alongside someone who attacked our character and professional qualifications for objecting to antisemitism. They've taken no witness statements, even though they said they would. They've called in our protesting students in a way that has a chilling effect on their expressing their outrage. They've not used their power to teach a repudiation of the antisemitism. I have searched my mind and my heart to find any explanation for this disregard. And all I can see is silent complicity.
Felix?
Hello, my name is David Felix Rogers. I'd like to thank board, thank the board trustees and here community for allowing me to speak tonight. I'm a senior speaking about my concerns over antisemitic material being taught at Mount Eden. I had this teacher two years ago as a sophomore and at that time, I wasn't very politically motivated. I wasn't very connected to anything, I was focused on my schoolwork and getting an A in the class. I ignored what he said then. I'm not gonna ignore it when I hear sophomores I know today saying the same anti-Jewish hateful conspiracies I heard from him then. When I know this teacher is teaching out of antisemitic book and I know that administration has known for two months and nothing's happened, or sorry, sorry. Finally, something happened today. The, the material was removed. After two months of them knowing, they finally said, oh, you're not supposed to teach out of this book. What happened in the last two months to take, what took two months for them to finally say, you probably shouldn't teach out of a book that was used by Hitler to justify genocide? What happened in that two month period that took so long? I understand the complications of admin and of the district and all the complicated legal cases and laws that you have to get around when teaching and when educating students and protecting students' safety. But clearly something's going wrong here if it takes two months for admin to say, you can't teach out of this book. I'd like to thank the board members who have replied my emails. But frankly, something's going wrong here. If, if a teacher is able to teach out of antisemitic book, teach their students antisemitic hate speech and conspiracy theories, something's going wrong here. I'd, I'd like to know that, I'd like to be comforted that there is something happening and there's gonna be a solution to this. I'd like to thank you guys for my time.
Yes, before I start, you start the time, I just wanna make a little comment in regards of the microphone that's there. Can you stop the time, please? I wanna make a comment in regards of the microphone and the people that are talking. So I just wanna make a comment because when people, I noticed that when people are talking about the numbers of the district and it kind of breaks down all the presentations, all the other comments we could, I was able to clear, to hear clearly, but not when people talk about numbers. And I know that also because it, it'll also, okay, you're running the number of the clock. It also happened to me, so first I wanted to say a happy African American month. I wish all African American people a great month and just that acknowledge and acknowledgement. I wanted to also mention the, the, the time, the little time that took the beautiful presentation of the, of the event that happened on January 28th. That was a beautiful event, unfortunately, I wasn't able to attend. But I wish that some of these items are put in the agenda. And to talk about solutions, you know, we need to start talking about these low numbers that our schools are facing, you know, about the bullying that our kids are going through. And, and put it in the agenda so we could see, you know, who's responsible? You know, who, who are, who's being held accountable? Obviously, you know, the leadership that we've been having, you know, at the district, it's not the right one. It's, things are still happening and it takes like two months for to do something so simple to take, remove the book. You know, obviously, somebody's not doing their job. So we need to start, you know, looking into all of that also. Tennyson, the bathrooms at Tennyson, those bathrooms were promised when all the, the other, other two schools bathrooms were remodeled. So they owe it to Tennyson, you know, where's the equity there? You know, Tennyson is the only one that doesn't have new bathrooms. And once again, bullying, we need to look and start funding to all of this, thank you.
Leah?
Hello, I'm Leah Tavert, I am a teacher, English teacher and the English Department Chair at Mount Eden High School. And I'm here like my colleagues at Mount Eden and students who've spoken out of concern about antisemitic hate speech being taught in our, in a classroom at Mount Eden in the English Department. And I'm especially concerned by the failure of my administration to step up and deal with this concern in a professional and effective way. And their failures have led to a continued continued harm. Like when we became aware of the harm, we knew harm was done. And as adults and professionals and people who care about students, it was our job to step up and do something about it. And we turned to our administration for that help. And they failed and they failed, they have failed our students and they failed us and it, it is only continuing. And I am here out of just deep, deep concern for our, our students, the, the way that we are, that they are not being supported. And it, it is not just this, this issue clearly based on all the other comments this evening. I'm asking you to step up and help our administration because they need help. Thank you.
Espinosa?
Hi, yes, can you hear me?
I can, go right ahead.
Okay, hi, my name is Maria del Carmen Espinosa and I wasn't gonna comment today, but after listening to all of, all of the other comments, I couldn't, I just couldn't not, I just couldn't resist. February 26th, 2020, 2020, okay, two zero, was my first time ever going to the city hall to an HUSD school board meeting. And that day, we all wore red and we stood behind Tammy Rosell with her daughter suffering the same bullying that our African American students are suffering now, are going through now, 2020, think about that. And they're still going through this. And I know people are saying, you gotta do something, you gotta do something, but this has been happening for how long now, over three years? And you still haven't done anything? School board? I only hear Sarah Prada, thank you, Sarah Prada, for talking about this and bringing this to light and yet nobody, none of you other school board members that have been there since 2020 have done anything. Why have you not done anything? It's been since 2020 when I stood there watching Tammy Rosell and her daughter crying. And she had us all in tears. How can you, you? Why haven't you done anything? Why have you not done anything? Why are you on the board if you're not gonna fix things? This is ridiculous, it's infuriating and ridiculous. And why is that, why does that teacher still have a job? That teacher should be fired for teaching the stuff that they shouldn't, what antisemitic? Are you kidding me? Why does that teacher have a job? Fire that person.
Board President Buffetti, we've gone past time and we have four hands raised.
I think based on the nature of the comments and our, our board's willingness to listen to the community, I think we'll allow those four speakers and then we'll conclude public comment.
Thank you, resuming for the four hands that were raised. They will be English Ward Stern, Stuart Rudy, Stephen Elliott and Latisha Dotson. I apologize if I mispronounced anyone's name, Ward Stern.
Hey, folks, thank you for extending the time. My name is Ward Stern, I'm an English teacher and HE rep at Tennyson High School. I want to echo or elevate some of the earlier comments, especially from our wonderful student rep, Juliana Rubé. I want to echo or elevate some of the earlier comments, especially from our wonderful student rep, Juliana Rubey. The medium is the message. So when students are not given access to enough bathrooms, when they have to contend with pigeons to enter the classroom, as Charles Jones said, when they're in rooms without ceiling tiles, as mine has been for the past two years, they're given a message of their value. And so I'm very grateful for the Hayward community that has funded our school refresh and the board and HUSD admin for seeing it through. It will make a difference. Students are going to receive better classrooms and receive better messages. But as you know, P Hall isn't receiving the same refresh as other halls because P Hall was never meant to last. It's a double-decker portable. I want you to take action. In the short term, please share the structural engineer's report so we can better understand how safe P Hall is after the water damage. And in the long term, please consider retiring P Hall and building new classrooms. It's time and the students deserve it. Thank you.
Ready?
Yes, can you hear me?
I can, go right ahead.
All right, thank you. My name is Stuart Rudy. I am a English teacher at Tennyson High School. I just want to thank the board for allowing me to speak today. I would also like to echo what Charlie Jones said and Ward Stern and Juliana Arribay, our student representative, said about structural issues and facilities issues at Tennyson High School. The first being the P Hall structure, which we see is being negatively affected and perhaps being compromised by weather and natural disasters as we look at what happened in Turkey over the past week and we see what natural disasters can do to structures that are unsound and not up to code. I hope that the district will take this, take it very seriously that we are worried about the P Hall structure. We do not want to be on the receiving end of a natural disaster that does something like we see on the news. I also want to thank Juliana Arribay for talking about and bringing up the issue with the bathrooms. We need to have temporary bathrooms, extra bathrooms that are there for the students to address a major sanitation issue at Tennyson High School. That is also a major social and emotional issue for our students who need to have their basic biological needs met. So please, please address those issues and please do share the structural engineer's report about P Hall as well with the staff. Finally, one last comment. I do want to appreciate and thank the staff and students from Mount Eden High School for raising the issue of antisemitism taught in the classroom. Antisemitic propaganda has no place in our schools as a Jewish teacher and one of very, very small minority of Jewish community members in Hayward Unified. I take serious issue with this and I hope that the board will as well. And again, I want to appreciate our allies at Mount Eden for bracing this issue so vociferously. Thank you.
Yeah?
Hello, can you hear me?
I can, go right ahead.
Great, thank you. Hello, my name is Stephen Elliott and I'm a teacher at Mount Eden High School. One week ago, I sent the following email to our superintendent and members of the board. I would like to thank Dr. Akenda for responding and voicing her support. I'll read the rest of the email now in case the rest of the team has not seen it. On our campus, an antisemitic document has been circulating amongst our student body. I do not know with what intentions this document was given to students, but I do know the purpose of the document. The document, the hidden tyranny, the issue that dwarfs all other issues, spreads blatant antisemitic propaganda and violates every aspect of our district's stance on anti-bias and anti-racism and culturally responsive teaching. In this document, some antisemitic tropes include, but are not limited to, Jews are satanic, Jews control the world's media, they are the cause of World War I, they blackmailed former presidents, lied to the United States and had them enter World War I, they control the world's financial institutions, and finally, the Nazis were in some way justified for their actions during the Second World War. The author Ben Friedman is a well-known Holocaust denier and antisemite. As a member of our school's ILT, SPDM and the grandchild of Jewish immigrants, I am deeply troubled by the inaction of our administration and the district on this issue. For the sake of our students, staff and the values we claim to uphold in Hayward Unified School District, please take action before this has a chance to metastasize any further. Thank you for your time and I yield my time.
Hi, good evening. My name is Latisha Dotson Abraham and I'm a parent of a student that goes to MLK. And this is actually my first time attending any type of board meeting and I'm here due to receiving an email of what really felt like a call for help and support for our Black students and parents. It's disheartening to know that there has been an ask for a policy to be put in place against the racism and blatant hurt and harm that has been continued to be held against our Black students. And the response is that we need data. And so my curiosity is who are the people who are asking for the data? And in response to an ask for a policy to put in place and that be the answer, it's tone deaf, it's disrespectful and you are complicit and in upholding the blatant racism that continues to go on with our students. My ask is that you can start to make a table that allows seats for the people who are being affected by this actual acts and crimes against our students. I would like to see more action around and earlier from the parent conference that was going on, I heard someone say that they felt very hurt. And that's all that the Black students and Black parents are asking for as well. And so if Hayward wants to continue to uphold their vision around no room for racism and that they are leaning into equity and inclusion, this is why we say Black Lives Matter because their, all lives cannot matter until Black Lives Matters too. And that does not just include in the world, but that includes in our school systems as well. We entrust you with our children, which means that you have to hear us when we're telling you that our children need your support and we need your support as well. Thank you.
Buffetti, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. And I just want to remind the public that whenever public comment occurs, staff does notate all the comments and appropriate follow-up should occur. To address, just in general, you know, this board does not stand for anything that has been mentioned tonight. That's not the school district I want to be part of or on the board of at all. So I think I can reassure you that every member on this board is committed to looking into this and changing that culture. And it's not something that's going to change overnight. I mean, culture changes because you make, you make policy changes that, that will affect it in the long run, but I think we are committed to this. So just want to reiterate that. We're onto board member comments now. I guess I'll go and start with trustee Roudin.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for being here. I really want to echo what trustee Buffetti just said. And I thank everybody for stepping to the microphone tonight and speaking your truth and speaking your heart. And I hear it and I get it. Every one of us, at least I do, and I'm assuming my fellow board members also have the opportunity once a week to, at least once a week, to meet with our superintendent one-on-one. And we have a great check-in and it's very good. And we can bring subjects to her that are on our mind. And I think I probably speak for all of us when I say that you've given us no shortage of topics, okay, tonight. All right. So thank you for that. And I assure you, we have heard you on all of it. My comments tonight were somewhat lighter and I still want to make them because for the last couple of board meetings, I've foregone public comment, just in the interest of time, but I do want to tell you what I've been doing out and about and so forth. And I don't think those of you that know me in the community and here in this room tonight know that I'm a huge advocate for the visual and performing arts in the Hayward Unified School District. And you know, I can almost sense it. There's probably somebody somewhere rolling their eyes and going, there he goes again. How can he be talking about those things when so much is happening around us that is really in a crisis situation? I do it because I'm absolutely convinced of the life-changing and life-transforming value that it has in the hearts and lives of students. Everything about it. So my comments tonight that I'm doing in and about the community have, are somehow all kind of tied into that, I guess. I did attend the Martin Luther King Day celebration at Sheba recently and I thoroughly enjoyed it. I write these things down because I don't want to muff up my words. I appreciated the contribution of our superintendent and also the performing groups from Hayward High and Mount Eden, as well as the various student poetry readings that went on. It was a memorable program of music, song, poetry, community award recognitions and a keynote addressed by our chief of police, Tony Chaplin, and I appreciated his words. On the 28th, in addition to the event that was, we've talked about earlier this evening, that wonderful event, in addition to that, I was able to go to the swearing-in of new officers for the Southern Alameda County NAACP and be there as a school board member along with president Buffetti. So my congratulations to all the newly sworn-in officers and to the NAACP for your tremendous work that you do throughout Southern Alameda County in general and in Hayward and in particular. On the 4th, just a few short days ago, parents, teachers, community members and administrators gathered right here in this room to revisit HUSD's Visual and Performing Arts Master Plan. Our group examined the plan and reflected on the current status and provided vision for moving forward for the next five years as we move forward in redeveloping our VAPA plan. It was good to discuss how the COVID pandemic has affected the arts here in our district and moved us to make some modifications to our living document that is the VAPA plan. I appreciate very much Mina Mangawala and Heather Figueroa for organizing the event. And I also appreciate the fact that our superintendent was there for the entire event that day, as well as our own Dr. Lisa Davies. Thank you for being at the event. It was great to have you both there. This last Friday, I was able to attend the Alcosta and CTA-sponsored breakfast in Pleasanton. And I thank Hea for extending the invitation to us here on the board and I was delighted to be able to spend some time with two of my fellow board members, as well as Hea representative, Mr. Charles Jones. It's not often that we have the ability to informally meet in that way. And it helps a lot to foster good relationships and meaningful dialogue in a somewhat relaxed setting. The two featured speakers, both of whom I appreciated immensely, were newly sworn-in state Senator Ayesha Wahab and Alameda County Office of Education board member Angela Norman, both of whom I admire a great deal. As a board member, I appreciate being able to gain some insight into how the CTA functions also. Tomorrow, I'm leaving for the annual CASMAC conference in Fresno for three days, where I'll be able to attend a few workshops and connect and reconnect with music educators and administrators from throughout the state. And the workshops that have attracted me that I'm going to attend have titles like Improving Diversity, Equity and Inclusion Through the Use of Vocal Jazz, Trauma Responsive Instructions in the Music Classrooms, and then this one, Music in the Middle: Why Is Music So Important in Grades Five Through Eight? I've set some time aside to meet with my colleague and very good friend, Michael Stone, for a couple of hours. Michael is the music coordinator and head of the VAPA faculty in Bakersfield City Schools. It's a district that looks a lot like our own in terms of the students that make it up. I first met Michael at the CSBA conference a few years back where he, along with his board of education, were doing a presentation on how their VAPA master plan works in Bakersfield. It's been highly successful there as they pay for every performing arts student in their district to have things like instruments, band uniforms, concert attire, sheet music, et cetera. I'm looking forward to hearing from him how they plan to incorporate the new Prop 28 money that all districts will be getting. Finally, I want to say that I'm very thankful for both of the newsletters that the board gets each month from our VAPA.
Second point of privilege, can we look at that technical audio issue?
Are we good? Oh, not quite.
Testing, testing.
Hello?
Looks like one of the interpreter's microphones is on. Are the speakers unmuted?
Hello? Very good, okay. I'm really thankful for both of the newsletters that the board gets each month from our VAPA TOSA, Mina Mangawala and from the music coordinator, Heather Figueroa. It is really helpful to see what's going on in the VAPA arts throughout our district. Also, I was intrigued and thrilled when I saw the following note from Tavis Cammott at Hayward High. Hayward High School's theater class has been given a once-in-a-lifetime opportunity to perform at the Edinburgh Fringe Festival. The students will experience three days in London and seven days in Edinburgh. While, and while they're in Edinburgh, the students will perform a play in front of an international audience. I'm interested in hearing more from Mr. Cammott about this trip, exactly what the Edinburgh Fringe Festival is. And perhaps down the road, we could support him and his students by having them perform a portion of their play that they will present in Edinburgh here at a school board meeting in a special feature before they go. And those are my comments tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Roudin. I believe we still have student trustee Anna Tran on the call and we can resume her student board member comments now.
Can you hear me? Can you hear me? Okay. Good evening, Board of Education, fellow student trustees and HUSD community. My name is Anna Tran and I am here tonight to present to you current events at Hayward High School. As we all know, yesterday was Valentine's Day. For the past month, ASB has been preparing for this big day to execute four events for students. To begin with, ASB prepared a spirit day where students wore pink and white to show off their farmer pride and a heart necklace event in which heart necklaces were hung around school. Students were able to keep these necklaces for themselves or give them to their special person. At the end of the day, the person with the most heart necklaces was crowned the king, queen, ruler of hearts. Continuing with the trend of Valentine's Day, the Farmer Chapel also made its in-person return with our second annual weddings. Students got married with the ASB wedding package, which featured a wedding certificate, rings, Polaroids and cupcakes for $7. Our beloved mascot Farmer Fred was also in attendance and married our principal, Mr. Miller. And throughout today and tomorrow's lunch period, divorce trials will also be hosted. And lastly, to end off, February 14th, Valentine's Day grams were delivered to students. And a card and flower bouquet to be sent to their special person during the period. The distribution created a lighthearted and humorous atmosphere that included many editions of Careless Whisper or George Michael being played. Moving on to athletics, winter sports at Hayward High are NCS-bound. Yesterday, the boys varsity basketball team played against Alhambra High School and finished with a 60-56 victory. And later today, the girls basketball team will be playing against Miramonte High School in the first round of NCS. Furthermore, the varsity boys soccer team also won their first NCS matchup by 1-0. Congratulations to all winter sports and we wish them the best of luck in future games of the respective playoffs. To close off athletics, a special shout-out to girls varsity basketball player Rose Jimenez for being nominated for the Bay Area News Group Athlete of the Week. Rose was dominant in Hayward's 64-29 victory against St. Joseph Notre Dame by scoring 22 points, grabbing 16 rebounds and making four blocks. Rose shares, "I'm very grateful to have been nominated. I've played basketball for several years now and I have a great love for the sport. I always strive to do my best, both in sports and academics, especially as part of a team that depends on each other." Voting closed at 5:00 PM today, but regardless, we would like to ask for the support of the Hayward community with Rose's nomination as we await the polls results. This week, Hayward High's avid, went the biomedical and engineering programs are on their solo trip, which I am currently attending. And for the past three days, students have toured colleges such as Cal Poly Slow, UC Santa Barbara, UC Riverside, Cal State Long Beach and UC San Diego. It has been a very eventful, yet fun trip with lots of studying, volleyball rallies and visits to the Santa Monica Pier. Students shared that it has been an extremely valuable and life-changing experience in gaining knowledge about what colleges they would like to apply to and attend. A big thank you to all our wonderful counselors, teachers and chaperones that have worked hard to make this trip possible for our college-bound farmers. And to close off, BSU is hosting its second spirit week this week in And to close off, BSU is hosting its second Spirit Week this week in honor of Black History Month, and have also been holding regular lunchtime events in honor of this very special month. Posters have also been hung around school to promote unity and pride. And with that, thank you for your attention, and remember to respect the farm.
Uh, thank you, Anna. I do just want to shout out she is on the road doing that. So thank you so much for your commitment to that role and uh making sure that you uh serve as that representative for your school. I think our next uh board member will be Sarah Prada.
Um interim, I just wanted to ask if there was going to be a uh Black History feature tonight?
I'm sorry, Ms. Prada, are you talking about special features?
Uh, yeah, or any type of uh feature.
So that is not on the agenda tonight. However, in my comments, I'm uh happy to share a couple of um of events that will be happening um that's coming up in celebration of Black History Month. We do have that planned as a special features for an upcoming board meeting.
Okay. Um, so I first of all, wanted to thank the school sites um that um invited and the ones that I was able to attend uh for acknowledging Black History Month and acknowledging Black students and um Black beauty, pride, and um I loved seeing the students at uh MLK perform for the acai event that was on Monday evening. Uh, the fashion show was absolutely beautiful. Um, I was able to see to see photos of it. I came a little late, but I did catch the tail end of the Drama Club's dance performance. And I mean, my God, it was it was incredible. I would have loved to seen them uh invited here tonight uh since especially since it's February, and we only have one board meeting this month. Um, but you know, so I also wanted to share some of my um favorite books that I um I'm going out and reading, and I'm I got a couple of extra copies for some of the classrooms. I really, really enjoyed this book. Um, it features two of my friends who are photographers and absolutely incredible photography. Um, "The Me I Choose to Be", and I'm just going to show you some of the imagery uh here. And the students love it, the teachers love it. It's one of my favorite books, so I love taking this to the classroom. And of course, Stacy's Extraordinary Words is another one of my favorites and the student favorites. Um, and then I I also wanted to share "I Am Hope" um by uh Shaka Jamal. And it is a documentary that is coming out, and he's doing a pilot program with Oakland Unified School District that is hugely impactful. And so I just wanted to show the trailer of that.
I knew something was shifting with my students when someone was really upset. And he said, "I just need to breathe. I just need to take a moment." I was like, "Wow, what if I would have been practicing since I was twelve?"
Like, it's pretty tough to grow up out here.
It's a struggle, but like, you could like, you could do it.
Like, when you feel powerful, you can do all the things that you want.
But the only way you can do that is you exercise that power that's within you.
That's where the mindfulness comes in.
My dream was that they can take that, internalize it, and then share it with others.
Because we feel that we're all one. We're all in this together, aren't we? Don't you give up, oh.
We do those things to free our mind, to emancipate our minds.
Here with me, I have three of East Oakland's finest.
You say positive things about yourself?
This is a smooth, quiet place.
Just, you know, getting through some type of stuff.
Just going up in life.
And I uh wanted to also mention again the book Viral Justice, where the author talks about the soul murdering of our children, particularly Black children, in the educational system. And from what I heard tonight and what I've been hearing since, honestly, since I entered the educational system as a as a young girl and what I experienced, it's disheartening to have it fall on deaf ears. It's disheartening to have parents and students continue to demand something change and the change not happen. And I guess we just continue to show up, but this is literally sacrificing our children, literally sacrificing the joy, the light. It is soul murdering that we are participating in as a board and a district by inaction. It's urgent, and we're already we're already so far behind what we need to be doing. So I hope you heard everyone who was brave enough to speak to us, because it takes so much to call in and to stand up at that mic. It takes so much. People are trying to save their children's light, and we were voted in here to bring voice and to do everything, everything within our willpower to change what's happening. I know y'all think I'm problematic, but I honestly can't stop.
Um, Clerk, Clerk Ramos.
I want to thank all of you that came today to voice your concern. My name is Joe Ramos. I'm the newly elected board member. And there needs to be change. The change begins with us. It begins with you, begins with me, and begins with the board. There was three things we talked about today. Number one was the uh water damage in Tennyson High School. I think the problem with that, matter of fact, uh trustee Sarah Prada, myself, went for a visit uh Tennyson, I believe it was last week, was there was a lack of communication. I think the problem was that people, especially in that wing, the P Wing, didn't know what was going on. And I think they were kind of like, I'd say ignored, but they were, it should have been told. I think on anything, when people aren't told, their mind starts thinking, you think the worst usually. But I think it's being handled, and I hope it is. And uh maybe before I continue, Mr. Alan Gard, could you comment on that, sir?
Uh, yes, that is being handled, and we're gonna ensure there's a uh continued follow-up with the students and staff uh that are located in the P Wing.
Amen. And hopefully this will get done before spring. Then the next item that we heard about was the antisemitism in Mount Eden, I believe, right? And that's something that that should have been addressed with before, but it's something that I believe is going to be addressed. I guess that would be uh, who would address that? Would that be Ms. Davies, Dr. Davies, or that?
Yes, thank you, Trustee Ramos. The district is working on this.
Okay, thank you. See, I I know from experience that little things turn into big things if you don't nip it in the bud, if you don't address it. We can't ignore it and hope it's going to go away. The old uh ostrich puts his head in the sand. We need to address it. And then the last thing, I like to end on something positive, was we heard about the family conference, I believe. Some of the people involved in that were Trufer Fernandez, Superintendent, and all these other groups. I I went there. I liked it. I only wish I had gotten there sooner. I'm gonna be there the next time. I'll probably beat everybody there. It was very amazing, and I know it was a good beginning. I remember telling uh Chen that it was like being in the conference we we attended in San Diego. It was very professional. It was very uplifting. As I said, from what little bit I saw, it was a a an educational experience in the form of leadership and teamwork. And I'm gonna end with this. What we are lacking, what I see in this district is leadership. And leadership begins at home. Leadership begins with the family. Leadership begins with you. Leadership begins with me. As trustee Prada ended with her little um program, I believe it said "I Am Hope", and I am hope, you are hope, we're all hope if we do something about it. We don't ignore it. And as somebody said in here earlier, I'm not sure who or I would give them credit, but it's about listening, right? Somebody said that? It's about listening, and that's what the students, everybody in the community needs. We need to listen. You need to listen to your children. I'm far from perfect. You can ask my wife. She'll tell you all my flaws. But I try to listen to people because I like to talk, but you learn more if you listen. Thank you very much, and listen to the inner voice. It's telling you to do something. God bless you all.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. uh Okenda.
Thank you. Um, given the gravity of this evening's uh comments, really from the beginning, I'm just going to keep my statement brief um and update the board around a committee that I serve on, the Equity Oversight Committee. We have um been charged with a revisioning of that committee led by several of the members who also serve on other committees, including the um Anti-Bias Anti-Racism Committee, the Ethnic Studies Committee, and a few others. And so um given the limited scope previously of this committee, we've decided to expand its uh duties, and so that is still in the works. And I will be sure to report back to the board what movement that takes going forward. But it is um a hopeful coalescence of some of these separated committees coming together and working together. So I'll be happy to report back after our next meeting next month.
Thank you. Um, I have a couple of things here to share. Um, I've been pretty active out there, uh getting out uh to the sites and the community and the events that we've been invited to. Um, wanted to give a shout out um to the uh Ochoa and Bret Hart girls' basketball teams. I was able to uh watch their um their game on the twenty-fourth. And just a big shout out to everybody that makes those uh games uh happen, uh from the admins uh to the athletic directors, um you know, to our classified staff. Um, it's, I I think it's a a lot of unsung heroes um in our athletic departments that uh allow our students to continue that, because that those games go on into the late night, so. Um, I also, you know, was able to attend the Families United Conference on the twenty-eighth and on the same day, see the swearing in of the the newest NAACP officers in our community. So um I I thought that was just such a privilege to be invited to and um, you know, really see uh and empower an organization that's that's doing good in our community. Uh, one of the uh, one of the things I really enjoyed also uh was um the VAPA Assembly that Ochoa Middle School did. Uh, they invited me, I believe, I believe it was last Friday, uh and was able to attend it. And um I I have something to share. It's one of the um um songs they sang. It's actually one of my favorite songs that's currently out there, so I'll let this play. The uh the new song by, I think, Stephen Sanchez, Until I Found You, but I just thought that was such a great performance. But they had a, they had everything at this VAPA Assembly. They had uh, they had singing, they had drama performances. Um, one of the drama pieces actually um that really actually, I think, was very, very relevant today was um it was actually a comedic piece, but it was, uh took place inside of a janitor's closet uh during a school lockdown. And you know, of of serious as the nature that incident is, um I think the students really executed the uh the purpose of that um of that piece and uh really did a good job um of performing in front of everyone. So I know a lot of hard work went into the students for doing that, so just wanted to give a shout out to the uh Ochoa students that um put that on. We also had a chance to do a uh Black History Month read-in at Burbank Elementary on the ninth of February. Um, I know several of the trustees attended that as well and um other administrators, so I think that was a very um, that was a very pleasant event, and I had the opportunity to share um uh and read Change Sings by Amanda Gorman, um and then also provide to give that book to the class. So that was um a really special moment. Um, we also uh had the opportunity, I think trustee Roden had mentioned it um at the CTA breakfast, where we were able to listen to Senator Ayesha Wahab, who's one of Hayward's very own. Um, and she talked about education and the things that impact education. Uh, and I think one thing that really resonated was um it's a lot of the external uh, you know, factors that that impact education, such as housing. Um, so that if we can get stronger on issues like that and um, you know, in talking to the city and uh other agencies that impact these issues, uh these are all things that will have hopefully positive outcomes on education and then the the people in our community. Uh, so I I don't want everyone to forget that, that, you know, in this move towards community schools and whatnot, um there are so many things that we can be improving in our community to make the lives of our students better um and to make the lives of our staff better, because we have so many people that live in this community. Um, so I thought that was a great reminder from our senator that um a lot of these issues that we face um they overlap uh and making sure that we appropriately um stand um, you know, with certain policies that uh increase housing and uh increase housing for people that aren't able to afford it. Um, those are the things that we need to be um pushing in this community. Uh, the other last thing I did want to um talk about was uh uh trustee Prada, uh Ms. Davies and uh Ms. Fernandez and I were able to visit MLK today uh and get a site tour. Um, and I I know that um, you know, there were definitely issues and questions about racial injustice that were brought up at that meeting. Um, so I I do want to let everybody know that we are committed to this work. Um, this is something that we're um, and this is something that's not going to go by my wayside. If you talk to any teacher I had, I, when I went through Hayward Unified, I was that student that would come to the podium and talk um to the board and tell them how disciplined I was. Um, I never wanted to be in a position where I heard the same thing, so when I hear those from our students, that's not um, that's not why. So when I hear those from our students, that's not, um, that's not why, that's not a way I ever wanted to lead. So I hope you know that I am listening. I understand what it's, you know, what it's like to feel like you're not heard. Uh, and I am gonna do everything I can to elevate your voice and um make sure that we do address a lot of these issues because this is not the district I want, I want to be a part of. So we'll, we'll definitely look into that. So and one more reminder, we do have H-LAC, which is the Hayward Local Agencies Committee, uh, which is a joint agency meeting between HARD, Hayward Unified, as well as the City of Hayward. And that's gonna be tomorrow at 4:30. Uh, links to the Zoom will be on our website at H-H-O-S-D.us. And then the last update outside of my own is a superintendent search update. Uh, within my board comments last month, I provided a brief update on the superintendent search. So I'd like to do the same and restate what I shared then. Uh, and we're gonna go and put that up on our screen, the timeline. And you can see the agreed upon timeline and currently we are on track, as we were last time. Advertisements have gone out seeking superintendent candidates. Our search firm expects to close the recruitment tomorrow and they will continue the preliminary work of going through the received candidate applications, reference checking and preparing them for board's consideration at the special closed session meeting, excuse me, on March 1st. During that closed session, the board is expected to, among the other responsibilities listed on screen, select which candidates from that pool will move forward to the interviewing process occurring later in the month between March 24th and March 25th. There will be no reportable actions for that closed session, apart from announcing a draft interview schedule for those dates. So I just wanted to highlight for the public, as you can see on the screen here, that we uh, we do not come out of, we do not come out and report who the final candidates are because that is part of a confidential process. Based on that timeline, the soonest the public would know about a superintendent candidate would be April 19th, 2023, um, at our board meeting. Everything after today's ad hoc committee item is essentially part of the confidential hiring process, which is typical with public employee hiring processes. Um, and if you have any questions, you can always email our board, uh, as well as um, our staff or any questions in regards to this process, uh, or I guess anything with the district in general. Uh, that concludes my comments. That'll move us over to item F4, Superintendent Comments. Interim Superintendent Ms. Fernandez?
Yes, thank you, President Profeti. Uh, while Erin's pulling up my comments, um, I'm just gonna go off script a little bit. I just wanted to express my appreciation for the comments that we heard today from our students, from our staff and from our parents. Um, and you gave us some issues that we need to consider and move urgently around, as well as some food for thought that came up this evening. So I want to make sure that I say out loud that we heard you. Um, and even though things are in motion, um, we can start to think about how we can create spaces where we can have deeper conversations rather than at the board meeting where we have two minutes to speak about the issue and then not enough time to actually talk about what our solutions may be. And so we'll make a commitment to move forward and thinking about how to create those spaces so we can have deeper conversations about the things that we want to see change in Hayward. I do believe we have the leadership here between our parents, our community and our staff to make the change that we want to see. And it's about tapping into the knowledge base of the folks that are and working with our kids every day and be, and our students to be able to make that change possible. But the first step is to say that we have work to do and we definitely have work to do. So with that, uh, my comments are brief tonight. Erin, thanks. Um, I do want to note that registration has opened. And so for our TK12 students, uh, we are encouraging folks to start making appointments for the next school year. We recognize that it is early. However, um, we are trying to make sure that we have the that we set our kids up successfully. So please go to our website and learn a little bit more about our warmer process and please sign your students up if you have incoming student to Hayward or we want to welcome you into Hayward Unified. It is Black History Month and so we have several events happening that I want to make sure to bring to attention to the public because we are inviting to the public to these events. We are having lots of activities at our school site as well. As Ms. Prada mentioned earlier, um, in terms of special features, we are planning for that our next board meeting in terms of special features, so we can highlight some of the things that are happening at our school sites. However, these are upcoming events that we think the public will really benefit from and would be interested in. So the first one is on February 28th, 4 to 7, at Cherryland Elementary School. We do have a keynote speaker joining us, Tyson Amir, um, as well as Amin Mohammed to speak to us on that day. There'll be fun activities for our, um, for all of us. So I wanted to invite folks to come. It is a free event for the public and open to the public. The next one is our Virtual Black Family Expo Event. That is, uh, we have the benefit of hearing from a well-known author, Bettina Love. And so we really want to invite folks to take advantage of this opportunity. It is on February 27th, 5:30 to 7:30. It is on Zoom and so folks are available. We do really encourage you to join us for this particular event and hear from Ms. Love, who has done some really great work. And the last one is Bret Hart African American Family Conference. This is an event that's happened several years in a row now at Bret Hart. So please mark your calendars. It is on March 18th, 9 to 12. It is a free conference for HUSD families and students. We have keynote speaker, Ms. Robin Fisher, who will be joining us that day. Um, and lunch and breakfast will be included. Again, these are exciting events that are happening that are coming up that we really want to encourage the public to attend. And um, and are excited about the fact that we have some really great folks joining us and with really great information inside to offer. And with that, I conclude my comments for the night.
Thank you, Superintendent Ms. Fernandez. Um, that moves us to our item G, Consent Items. Please note the procedural order for items appearing on the consent agenda, which are normal operations that are usually voted on in what is called an omnibus action. This means the board will vote once for all items appearing on this portion of the agenda labeled letter G. Because the public hybrid access to this meeting, we will ask that if there are any public speakers for consent items and then note which ones they'd like to speak to. Just note that this will not be the time to offer that comment, but later in the meeting when we return to the polled items. Uh, Ms. Rodriguez, do we have any um requests to pull an item from consent?
We do not.
Board, do we have any requests for consent, Dr. Akenda?
Uh, yes, I need to pull G6, please.
G6, any other items? Or do we have any other items to pull? Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and pull G9 eight, or sorry, G10H. Uh, and then um, based on the balance of the consent items, again, we're pulling item G6 and G10H. Uh, would anyone like to move the current balance?
I'll move the current balance.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Trustee Roden. Okay, we'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor of the current balance, again, minus G6 and G10H. Passes 5-0 motion moved by Vice President Dr. Akenda, seconded by Trustee Roden. Moving on to item H, Action Items. Uh, the six-step procedural order we will follow for action items is as follows. One, staff presentation. Two, board questions. Three, public speakers. Four, call for the motion and the second. Five, board deliberation on the motion and then six, board vote. First action item we have on today's agenda is H1, Superintendent Search. Appoint the Ad Hoc Interview Panel Committee. Uh, board, are there there it is, I'll, I'll wait for it to go up on the screen here. Board, are there any questions on this item? Oh, I don't believe we have a staff presentation, it's just gonna be the visual. No, no board questions. Uh, okay, Ms. Rodriguez, do we have any public speakers on this item?
Charles Jones.
Hello, Charles Jones, uh, Tennesse High School Social Studies Department Chair and a HEA rep. So I just wanted to say I really appreciate seeing the amount of parents and labor representation for this commit, uh, for this committee interview panel because those are definitely voices that need to be heard. Uh, one issue, though, is that the date chosen for it is CTA State Council, which is where a lot of times some of our elected members will go to, uh, to do things on that. Like, I was at the last one changing CTA policy towards community schools. So like, it has a big impact and I know the president of AOD has issues with that timing, but I see that we do have representatives for it. One other thing that I'm really concerned about, though, my biggest concern is the lack of student voice on this committee, since they are our biggest stakeholders within that. We have one member. I, I think that we can expand and should expand to add all four members of our, of our student speakers that we have here because their voice matters and they represent a huge stake within this. And we can expand this without cutting others. There's no reason that we can add more voices and let everyone be heard. I think that's incredibly important and that's how we get the best results for the person that we're looking for. Just is how we expanded the 7-Eleven Committee. The more we hear, the better we do. So I'd like to see that expanded, but, but not at the expense of others because we can do both. Thank you.
That concludes the public speaking on this topic. It would move to it would move to a motion.
Okay, well, I'm gonna turn it back over to you. Okay.
Um, would anyone like to move this item?
I'd like to motion, we expand the student, the student representation.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay. Uh, then we are in deliberation um for this item. Did you want to talk about the parameters of which you'd like to expand it to?
Um, if uh, any of the student trustees would like to be a part of the panel, I'd like, and are available at that time, I would like them to be welcome to be on the panel. I'd also like to know if any other students in the district applied for the uh, position. How many? And if there's a, a way that they could also be a part? Because honestly, it comes down to the students and their voice. So if there were more student applications, I'd just like to know.
Yeah, I do want to check with Ms. Rodriguez because she's been helping facilitate this. Ms. Rodriguez, do you have a comment to that?
Yes, at the direction of the executive search firm, they indicated that we would need one student board member. And so we didn't canvass the student body for representation as a result of that direction. What we did get was two student board members expressed interest and that's how we see the representative as well as the alternate. So two students for sure, two student board members expressed interest. And within the parent applications, we did see one student application.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. And I think, I think one thing to note too with the ad hoc committee is that it's not directly representative of any importance of specific groups in our, in our, in our school. So, you know, I think the number does not correlate to like how much we want that voice to be at the table. Uh, I mean, at least that was the direction of the executive search firm is not to dilute the room. But I think what we can do is, um, you know, empower the student representatives to make sure that they are contacting their student peers to make sure that they're representing them accurately there. But I think there may be room to have, was it two expressed interest uh, in that room? And I think that might be the way, but I think canvassing the student body at whole might not be, might be a little past that point. Go ahead.
I, I would just like maybe to do intentional outreach to the other. Um, I'm not sure, do we still have an alternating student board member for Brinkwitz? Or is it just Jalen?
A second student is named, but we've never had an interaction. We have had reach outs, but we haven't had an interaction with that person. So it's been Jalen as far as I understand.
I'll defer to Trustee Prada because she made the motion, but I would just like to make sure that we ask Julianne and Jalen specifically if they would like to serve. If they do not, then to have two. If that Trustee Prada, is that uh, okay with your motion you made?
Yeah, um, I want to make sure that the two, that we have a Trustee Lewis and Trustee Tran on the panel and then also extend an invitation. And then, and let me clarify, you said that through the parent application, there was a student who was interested?
Yes.
Um, I, I would also like to make sure that that student got a formal invitation. I think uh, as a board, it still is within our willpower to make some adjustments. We did hire this company, they gave their recommendations, but as a board, we can, we can make a, a a few changes to make sure that these student voices are on that panel.
Does the rest of the board feel about?
I, I, I feel fine with it. I know, I, Julian, do you have a question?
Yeah, um, I, I would definitely be open to um uh, participating in, in the interview panel. I just hadn't, um, I didn't take up the opportunity when it was presented um, by Ms. Rodriguez, um, because I wanted to give way to, um, hopefully Kamari, um, to take it up because he's an underclassman. And so I felt that I was like, I, I, I'm, I'm old, I'm leaving. So, so, so I was like, well, I think, I think I should step back and, you know, let, let him, you know, ta-take it up hopefully. Um, because I did see that it was, it was one person. But I mean, I have no shortage of words or questions. I would have no problem with, um, with, with participating in the panel if that was the will of the board to allow.
I, I, I don't think any of us have a problem with that. But so my question is, are we gonna attach a number to it? Like maximum of four, five, six? What, where are we at with that? Four? But then what if they all four say yes? And then there's that other student who applied in the parent thing? So.
Say six.
Okay, so should we attach a number to it? Five?
That's clear.
Up to five? Okay. All right.
Sure, I was saying, yes, I would, I would suggest we move it to six because in case that other person who showed an interest and if he, he or she's not interested, we're back to five. I think we covered all bases that way.
I think what we might need as a board to kind of get to is, uh, I guess more of a concrete number about this, um, of what we want this to look like. But VP Akenda?
I, I, I think there may just be a miscommunication, but we have four student board member representatives, that's four. They all are given the opportunity to participate along with the one other student who applied via the parent application. So five. And we offer all five of them the opportunity. Is that right? I don't know where six is coming from, I guess. But we didn't have any other, the application process is closed at this point, so there wouldn't be any others applying. So we're going with those who.
I, I also think, um, I don't know, I think the four makes sense, but I think the extra student, it's, I mean, it doesn't seem fair, I guess, to the students at large. But these, you know, these students were elected by their peers. Uh, I have no problem with these four. Um, unless we open it up to the rest, but that's, that's, you know, I guess that's the question I have, is how one feels about that.
Well, if you give a maximum of five, doesn't mean it has to be five. It just leaves that door open.
To five? Okay, um, so just to reiterate the current motion on the floor, uh, which was moved by Trustee Prada was originally to increase the number here, um, of student participants on the ad hoc committee from the one. And it sounds like the board is getting to the number five here. Uh, that was seconded by Trustee Akenda. And that's what I'll be calling for the, uh, the vote for again. So that's to clarify, we're moving our ad hoc student representative from one to five. So I'll go and call for the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Passes 5-0, again, Trustee Prada, uh, seconded by Trustee Akenda.
Clarifying the motion that it was to appoint the ad hoc committee and increase?
Correct, correct, the current committee in front of us with that amendment. Okay, uh, that brings us to item H2, Board Policy, BPAR 13213 Uniform Complaint Procedures, First Reading. I believe we have a staff presentation on this?
Uh, yes, so in front of the board is the first reading for, you know, a policy BP AR 1312.3, which is our Uniform Complaint Procedures. The there are adjustments made to the policy based on the ever changing laws surrounding uniform complaint entitled nine procedures. So in front of the board are the adjusted changes that we're recommending based on the changes in law. This particular policy did go through the equity oversight committee on January fifth. And um, it was vetted and the recommendations from that committee was um, incorporated into the first draft. Um, this also um, was reviewed by legal to ensure that we are in compliance around it. So uh, for tonight, we're recommending to the board the approval of the first reading of this policy.
Uh, board, do we have any questions?
I have one possible correction.
Go ahead, trustee.
Looking down to paragraph one, two, three in red there. Just it's it's not quite labeled correct. It should be LGBTQ plus and we left off Q. So that needs to be added in.
Thank you for pointing out trustee around and we can make that adjustment.
I have.
Any other board que- yeah, trustee Prada.
Um, so my question isn't necessarily with uh, this document, but all but the the actual uniform complaint forms themselves. Um, is there? Can we review the review that at a future time? Um, I compared our forms to New Haven School District's forms. And um, the the amount of detail that goes into the forms for the students or parents or whomever to fill out uh, in comparison to our forms. It's it's there's a huge difference, and I think we should be leaning more towards the uh, very detailed information gathering that is presented on on their forms. So if we can like also take a look at our uniform complaint forms and possibly uh, changing them so that the when the a for a complaint is filed, there's actual detailed questioning and documentation um. That the families can put in, put into it. It's just a.
Yeah, trustee Prada, I'm I'm sorry, I missed the um, which form were you looking at from which district? I I missed that part.
Uh, uh, New Haven.
Oh, New Haven. Yes. Yes, we can certainly look at the form and see if we can make some additional adjustments to it. And so that's um, um, it gives us more information to work with. We do contact folks once they've um, submitted the complaint so that we can actually do a thorough conversation with them, but we're happy to look at all needing for.
Yeah, any other questions from the board? Uh, Ms. Rodriguez, do we have any public speakers on this item?
We do not. I have a clarifying question. On the request of trustee product. Is that placed as board direction, will of the board, a future agenda item? Can we classify? The request?
Uh, yes, trustee product, just to, I guess, to quote or summarize, uh, you wanted basically our form to be uh, compared to a New Haven's form, just make sure that it is.
Um, so this is just like a first run through. I just was asking if in the future, um, I know that it's coming back. Uh, between that time, can we do a comparison of our unified complaint form? I just think we need to have like a upgrade in our form. Um, and I just looked at other districts' forms and I found that our neighbor has a very detailed version. And I think that could be more helpful for for the community when they are filling out those forms. Yeah.
Perfect. How's everyone feel about that? Yeah, I think, yeah, I think we have board direction for that. Okay, uh, looks like we don't have any public speakers on this item. Um, though which will leave us to the point where um, we can call for the motion. And you know, like to move this item or?
Okay, but I'll second.
Moved by uh, Dr. uh, Dr. Akenda and seconded by trustee Prada. Uh, we are now in deliberation. Uh, do you guys like to make any comments, open comments?
I just wanted to say that I think it's fine to go ahead and have the extra language that it's more complete and covers everything. Just make sure that it doesn't become convoluted so that parents are confused and not sure how to answer, you know, I just make it really plain, but.
I do want to note, this is not related to the board policy. That's a separate matter you're referring to, right? What trustee Prada is referencing?
Yeah, I thought we were in discussion.
Um.
We're deliberation.
Yeah, we're in deliberation. Um, it's technically within the scope. I can make that comment.
So. Can I not make that comment?
No, you you can. It's it's a little, I guess, outside of what exactly we're voting on the motion, but it is a reference to a direction that was given by the board. So that's that's actually fine to get.
Okay.
Uh, any other deliberation or comments from the board? Okay, uh, I will go ahead and call for the vote then. Um. All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes five zero, moved by uh, Dr. Akenda, seconded by trustee Prada. And I guess just on top of that direction, I guess it never hurts to look at what other school districts are doing that may be more efficient and whatnot. And if it applies to us, I think it's always a good, good recommendation. Uh, H three, local assignment option, human resources. Um, Steph?
Yes, thank you. So we are bringing forward um, for action, a local assignment option. Um, this is a requirement of the county that the board take action on this. C T C allows um, teachers who are fully credentialed, who may need to temporarily be awarded a a credential to work outside of their specific credential area. And so we are bringing forward one um, request to do so for your approval tonight.
Uh, board, do we have any questions? Clerk Ramos, go ahead.
Do you be specific from what uh, subject matter to what?
Yes, so I believe our um, the candidate we're bringing forward holds a multiple subject uh, credential. And so um, they are employed at a middle school and um, have sought to add uh, social studies credential through C T C.
Uh, do we have any other questions from the board? No? Okay, would anyone like to move this item? Oh, sorry, sorry. Uh, but next item is a order of operations as public speakers. Ms. Rodriguez, do we have any poll comments? Okay, uh, then um, is there a call for the motion?
I'll move it.
Um, motion made by Ken, uh, trustee Rowden, is it seconded by clerk Ramos. Uh, we are now in deliberation. Uh, trustee Brown, would you like to? Deliberate?
I know, it's just like, there's like two other things, like the, you know exactly what I'm talking about, right? Could you spell them out again? Because now there's a third one, and I was having a hard enough time keeping the first two straight. So, yeah.
Yes, so the local assignment option is only available to fully credentialed um teachers who want to add or work in an an area that they need as supplemental authorization to do so. So that's one. The others I think you're referring to are the provisional intern permits. That's the PIP. And then there is another temporary assignment. And both of those are for candidates that might meet qualifications. They may have done coursework um, in college. They may um, meet criteria that we can use to then give them a temporary credential to teach in a classroom.
Okay, thank you. Uh, any other deliberations from our board on this item? Okay, is there a call for the, I'm sorry, we already were already passed that. So I'll go ahead and call for the vote. Uh, all those in favor of passing um, item H two or sorry, H three? Opposed? Passes five zero. Again, motion was made by trustee Rowden, seconded by clerk Ramos. Item H four, assistant superintendent contract amendment, office of superintendent. Uh, Steph?
Yes, thank you, uh, President Buffet. So in front of the board, we are bringing for the recommendation of the extension of the contract for the assistant superintendent business services. It is a three year extension and serve as an amendment to the contract that's currently in place, which will put the um, the contract will be extended through June thirtieth, twenty twenty six.
Thank you. Any board questions? Uh, clerk Ramos, go ahead.
So I'm waiting. It's saying assistant superintendent. So is that? Who, which, which?
Um, it's for Mr. Guard.
Till when? Till June?
Correct, we um, our extensions are normally for three years, so that his contract will be extended to through June thirtieth of twenty twenty six.
Okay, we'll go to one.
Any other questions on the board? Okay, public speakers, Ms. Rodriguez?
Yes, to Daisy Bates and Aracelia Rosco. I see one other hand raising. Daisy Bates?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, you sound a little muffled, but yes.
Hello, my name is Daisy Bates. I'm the president of A O D, the Association of Educational Office and Technical Employees. And I have a comment regarding this contract. Mr. Guard's new contract will pay him five thousand a year for longevity after five years. Classify units do not get close to five thousand years, five thousand a year until they have worked for the district for twenty five years. His salary is already two to three times our salaries and now Mr. Guard will get longevity after five years and we have to wait twenty five years to get the same longevity. I hope you can discuss this and see the difference, the great difference between our benefits and the benefits of a of an administrator. Thank you.
Let's go.
Yes, um, I also, uh, uh, that was one of the things that I was looking at too. And I also agree with Ms. Bates, you know, uh, we're talking about salaries and that difference in salaries is just way, way too much. Uh, where's the equity that the district always um, brags about and talks about? You know, this is something that uh, definitely needs to be discussed and uh, further for that because this is not um, equity. You know, we have our teachers and our staff that barely get that amount and and just for all of a sudden, just go ahead and and get that type of uh, um, money is just not edible, edible. Uh, so uh, please have a discussion on that. Thank you.
Espinosa?
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Hey, this is Maria Del Carmen Espinosa. Um, first of all, why are we? Mr. Alan Gard already has a job. I mean, why are we not bringing people from the outside? Um, someone new, someone fresh to be the assistant um, superintendent. How is it possible that you guys want to hire or give that position to um, Mr. Guard when he already has a position within you H U S D? Who I am so sorry to say this, but needs to work on a little bit better. Also, the amount that you guys are going to pay him, I mean, the salary is just ridiculous when you have other people who are fighting to pay their rent. Um, other employees who are can, who are living in a multiple household because they cannot pay their rent or who are driving three to, you know, two to three hours every morning to get to Hayward to work. This is ridiculous. You guys need to look at other candidates to be assistant uh, superintendents. Mr. Guard, you already have a job. I mean, come on, you guys got to look into hiring on the outside and bringing new faces and fresh ideas. I am so opposed to this. Thank you.
Uh, just a clarification too. This is the same post that Alan Guard is currently in. It's a renewal of contract, so it's not a new position um, as stated before. Uh, that brings us to um. Uh, call for the motion. Is there a call for the motion on the board?
I will move it.
Motion uh, by trustee Rowden, seconded by anybody?
I'll second.
Seconded by Dr. Akenda. We are now in deliberation. Any comments from the board? You moved it, so.
I did move it. I think maybe to answer the question is the simple answer is I think the gentleman could go anywhere and command that salary. Anywhere. I think we are lucky to have him. I think what he does every day, the presentations he does for us and me personally, not being a math whiz. He spells things out in such a way that I understand it. And to me, that's invaluable. Um, and what he what he does in terms of saving our district money. I think, yeah, I think this is not an unreasonable request at all. And yes, I agree about the teachers. I would like to pay them all of them this much. But I do not want to lose this man from our district at all.
Any other board comments for deliberation? Dr. Akenda?
It's not just that he could go earn this. He could earn way more, actually, way more outside of education, doing what he does. So I agree, we're very lucky to have him and I am um, thrilled that he wants to stay.
Um, I'll go ahead and give a comment, might as well. Uh, I think sometimes we forget that Hayward Unified is an organization that's comprised of nineteen thousand students and operating budget of two hundred and eighty million dollars, one of the thirty sites that we look after. Uh, with sixteen hundred plus employees. Uh, any organization of that size in the private sector, um, the title that Alan holds here is would be a CFO. Uh, and a CFO's salary would command a lot more than what's being offered here. And um, so I I I think it's more than fair. I think he's somebody who's really dedicated, is time to the community. One of the things I was most impressed about uh, recently was at the Families United Conference. I think he was the only person in cabinet that was giving out uh, a seminar. Uh, he did a budget one-on-one class um, for our community and our parents and, you know, uh, that type of dedication to making sure that he's out there on the, on, you know, the um, the ground floor, talking to our our parents about the budget. Um, really shows his commitment because he didn't need to do that. Um. So I I I'm going to be voting yes on this. I'm I'm very proud that Alan, uh, Mr. Guard is uh, an employee of ours and uh, would like to see uh, more of him and more of his work. Um. So uh, are there any other board comments? Yeah, trustee Prada?
Um, I'd like to uh, ask if there, if cabinet has assessments and evaluations um, before they are, the contracts are renewed and um, and raises are given. And I I mean, do we just renew when a contract is over or is there, can you explain more what the process is? Because um. I think it's, it's a good. I mean, there there's obviously concern, so.
Yeah, so cabinet level um, positions are not any different than other positions in our district. There's definitely an evaluation process that goes along with that. Um, and as Alan's supervisor this year, um, in my in my um, space as an interim superintendent, I am recommending um, the contract going forward because I do believe that he's either met or exceeded expectations in the areas that he's responsible for um, and has shown that that leadership that we're looking for. And so that the, but in terms of process, Miss Prada, the, if that's the question, right? Is that there is um, a process for evaluation and an observation of employees and the recommendations um, are based on the recommendations of supervisors.
Okay, so like within house, pretty much, yes.
I'm sorry, say again.
Within, I have a mask on. I said like, so within, within house, it's how the um, evaluation process goes.
Correct. So executive cabinet, which are the folks that you see at this table, report directly to superintendent. I serve as their supervisor.
I see, okay. Um. I I don't have anything personal against Alan. I know that there should be a little bit more transparency in these processes, just because there is concern. Uh, just, you know, with the way we perform and also with the way cabinet and the district um, performs. And to be honest, it's been a turbulent year, past year. Uh, the school closures, there's been a lot happening. And a lot of that has fallen into categories that that Mr. Guard um, oversees. And so I do understand where there is a concern, where there's, you know, when a renewal and a raise are is kind of just quickly passed, passed along. I know with the mostly the full support of the board. So I'm just saying that that type of evaluation um. Transparency for the the public is is a good practice for us to to maybe start doing and um. Also take in with consideration that um. The operational sustainability team was underneath Mr. Guard and uh, to many, myself included, that was. to many, myself included, that was a disaster. And, you know, the compliance with the way that previous superintendent Dr. Wayne went about the school closures was supported by cabinet and, and Mr. Guard. So this is where the concern comes in. This is where the public sees this item and the quickness of the board to just push, you know, put it through without a pause. So I'm just saying, like, in future references, we really need to paint a full picture of what has happened in the, in the previous years under cabinet before we just approve contracts and give raises.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would argue that this is a very transparent process for this role. It's not very common at a job where the public can comment about the job that you're applying for. And then we also have a lot of window into how he's performing by when we speak with our interim superintendent, so I, I, I think that part is, you know, very transparent. Trustee Rowden?
I was, the only, I think probably the only way we could make it more transparent is if the the evaluation itself was made public. Do we do such things? Or is there a law that we can't, a confidential, I, I don't know.
Right, so that would be part of the, Ms. Watson certainly correct me, but that's part of the employees confidential records, and we would not make that public.
Any more than you would like a teacher's evaluation or something?
Correct, and I do want to just drop in a point of clarity. We are, the board is not voting on giving Mr. Gar a raise tonight. There is indeed a longevity stipend embedded into his amendment, and that longevity stipends are customary in terms of what we offer for staff, for the purpose of retaining staff, and lives in all the contracts. So I just want to point that out, because I, I don't want there to be any misperception that we're giving Mr. Gar a raise tonight.
Thank you. Any other board deliberation? Clerk Ramos, go ahead.
Yeah, I have, now that I, now that all this has been said, I've been thinking about it. And I like that word that trustee Prada said transparency. And from the get-go, when we found out about this site, I've only been to three schools. One of them was Tennyson. And I think one of the problems that occurred was nobody told the teachers in the P Hall area. And I, I went, I spoke to Mr. Guard, and I asked him who was in charge of facilities and that, and he withdrew the name. I told him, you know, I can find the name, I can go around you. So I think because of that, now it's given me pause. Now I'm thinking, hmm, do I want to approve? Because I was going to do it a few minutes ago. But now I want to know that if I ask you for information, you're willing to give it. You know, that this should have been taken care of at Tennyson before. And now we're not doing it. Now I start wondering, why aren't we doing it? So nothing personal against Mr. Guard, but I'm starting to question his decision-making skills. So I'm going to vote no. I don't want to make an enemy, but I'm going to do what I think I got to do, because this school district has to be run properly. And hate to be blunt, but sometimes we're going to have to clean house. Because I think there's some people that have been in here for a while, and they came with the old administration. I'm the new guy on the block. You know, so I'm taking a chance by saying this, but I don't care. I do what's right. If you don't like it, don't vote me in next time. You know, it's like transparency, what it's all about. That's my point. So.
Is there, any, any other board deliberation on this item? Okay, I will go ahead and call for the vote. Again, we are on item H four. All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes three-two. Again, it was moved by trustee Rowden, seconded by Dr. Akenda. Three-two was the vote total. Item H five, financial audit report, business services.
Vicky, board president, we have the agenda, the 2021, 2022 financial audit report. We have the external auditor from Christie White and Associates, Michael Ash, here to present the audit to the school board. Is he on the agenda? Okay, cool. And while that's moving forward, this is the typical time where the audit for the 2021, 22 school year would be brought forward. The fiscal year ends June 30, 2022, and then that's when the external auditors come to the district, review the finances, and then develop the report. And it appears that we have Michael Ash present.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just want to thank the board for inviting me here this evening. My name is Michael Ash, partner with Christie White. We are the district's external auditor, and we have been the district's auditor for the last four years. Next slide, please. Okay, so this is just an overview of, for the audit report of what's the school district's responsibility and what's the auditor's responsibility. One thing that's very important from the school district side is establishing effective internal controls. Another thing, the financial statements themselves, people get confused sometimes because you see Christie White's letterheads on the audit report, but these are actually the district's financial statements. We help them put them together because we have the expertise to do that. That there can be very complicated financial statements, so we do help them with that. And then, as you have, I know you're talking about budget development later this evening, prepare and manage the budget. So those are the district responsibilities. Some of the auditor's responsibilities are to give our auditor's opinion, so we give auditors opinions on different ones, which I'll go over briefly. But it's reasonable assurance that the financial statements are materially correct. The opinion does not address the financial condition of the district itself, but it does, you, so you can have a district that's in financial trouble and have a good audit. And then, on the flip side, you can have a district that's in great financial safe and have a bad audit. But for this district, we issued an unmodified opinion. That's a clean opinion, that's the best opinion that you can have. If you can flip to the next slide, please. And this is just what it looks like, so it's an unmodified opinion. It's saying that the, the financial statements are presented fairly in all material respects. So that's a clean opinion. All four years that we've worked with the district, we have had this, been able to give this clean opinion, so that's very good. Next slide, please. So every school district, charter school, county office of education gets their audit done under what's called government auditing standards. And what that means is that we have to look at your internal control or financial reporting. Now, government auditing standards does not require an opinion on internal controls over financial reporting, but it does require that if we do come across anything that we deem to be a material weakness or a significant deficiency, that has to be reported as an audit finding. And I'm happy to say that we did not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies noted in, in internal controls over financial reporting. Next slide, please. Another opinion that we give, so because the district spends over $750,000 in federal monies, we have to do what's called a single audit, and that's an opinion over federal compliance. So the office of management and budget puts out a compliance supplement every year for each of these programs, and they ask us to look at certain things. There's also a certain way that we have to pick the programs that we test. So we looked at four programs. Again, we had an unmodified opinion, the best possible, and no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. And then finally, state compliance. So there's a state audit guide that comes out each year that the state wants us to look at different procedures, everything from your intent, attendance, your instructional minutes, your Cowpad reporting, your school accountability report cards. It's just a very long, extensive list of things that they want us to look at. We were able to give an unmodified opinion on state compliance. We did note three deficiencies. Again, with state compliance, it's, it's all or nothing. It's either, it's, if we come across it, no matter the significance to the district, we do have to report it as an audit finding. So I just want to say that none of these, none of these findings I would consider major, and none of them have a financial impact to the district. So the three minor findings, one related to the school accountability report card, one related to the comprehensive school safety plan, and then one for site attendance. It was just at one school site. The teacher rosters were not being signed, but we were able to get comfortable with that attendance in other ways. So again, that's, that's, that's all I have for my short presentation, and I am happy to answer any questions that you might have. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Clerk Ramos, go ahead.
Sir, can you explain what the K three grade span adjustment is?
Yeah, that's, so the K three grade span adjustment, so there's a requirement that for kindergarten through third grade, that class sizes are kept at a certain level, or that the district has a collective bargaining agreement in place that states other. So there's, there's an audit procedures that we have to do surrounding that class size for grades K through three.
What is that grade size, sir, or class size?
I believe the average is twenty-four to one.
Okay, so there should be no more than twenty-four students? Is that what the state says?
On an average, unless the district has a collective bargaining agreement that states otherwise.
Okay, thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Vice President Dr. Akenda?
This may be related to Mr. Guard, but related to the three deficiencies there, have we addressed those?
Yes, so for each of the three items, there's a process where we have to report to the county office of education what our plan is and corrective action. The corrective actions are noted in the audit report, and so those are being implemented.
Any other questions from the board? Okay, I think we'll go to public comment. Ms. Rodriguez, any speakers?
No.
No speakers. Looks like we're going to call for the motion.
I'll move to approve.
Motion made by Dr. Akenda. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by trustee Rowden. We are now in deliberation. Would anyone like, would you like to start off, Dr. Akenda? Okay, anything else? Okay, it looks like there's no deliberation. So I'll go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Passes five-zero. Motion made by the vice president, Dr. Akenda, seconded by trustee Rowden. Okay, so we are going to return to our consent. Oh, budget workshop, yes, okay. Sorry, we are going to move on to our budget workshop. That is item I. I'll let business services take over.
Great, thank you. So today we're going to conduct a budget workshop. So each year, this is something that, that we do based off of the information that's provided by the January governor's budget proposal. And so tonight, we're going to just provide some context around access to the budget, if we go to the next slide. And point to the community, different resources, access to the state budget or to the district's budget. I'll go over the state budget in detail, the district's budget, enrollment, attendance, revenues, and takeaways. And we go to the next slide. So this is the webpage that we have at the school district website, budget reports. This is also where the audit report that was just reviewed is located. Also included, in case anyone wasn't able to attend the Families United Conference or the budget workshop session session was amazing. Just sharing that the presentation and materials are also included on the webpage. And so one thing to point out is that the fiscal years can be confusing, because we were just talking about the 21, 22 audit report. We're currently in the 22, 23 school year, and there's a budget proposal for 23, 24. And so this grid just helps point to the different timeframes and when we're talking about different fiscal years of the budget. And so getting into the state budget. So this is an annual timeline to help provide context with the state budget. So in January, the governor released the governor's proposal for the following fiscal year. And so that then kicks off the budget timeline where the state senate and state assembly review those, review that proposal and come up with their own priorities. The legislative analyst's office, which is a nonpartisan state organization providing guidance, they then review that and provide their report. And then the next key update that we would utilize for our finances would be in May, when the governor collects all of the information and provides revised proposal. So one thing to point out is that sixty percent of the revenues that the state collects comes from personal income tax. If we go to the next slide, that's a major consideration, because the other thing to note is that California has a progressive tax structure. That means that a large percentage of the personal income tax that the state receives is dependent on high-income earners, and tax is assessed on stock market gains. That means if the stock market does not do well, then state revenues decline. And so, you know, what's going on with the state budget? So if we go to the next slide, we'll see that nine months ago, the nonpartisan legislative analyst's office, they produced a warning to the governor and the state legislators about concerns that they're seeing related to the state budget. And then, one month later, the state approved a record spending plan. Then, six months later, the concerns that were outlined by the legislative analyst's office unfortunately materialized, and now as part of the governor's budget proposal, the governor's outlining strategies to deal with the budget deficit that has been, that has materialized. And so what's materialized? So in June, when the state adopted their record spending plan, that's noted in the blue, blue section. Now, six months later, as part of the governor's proposal, they've updated those projections, and you'll see that personal income tax, which is sixty percent of the revenues, are significantly down. One of the unfortunate things is the legislative analyst's office just today released a update saying that they, they view the governor's proposal as still too high, and that revenues are, they're seeing revenues decline even further. And so one thing to note is that the industry experts are identifying that there's a concern, and that global economists have identified that when there's a, when there's consensus around potential recession over the next twelve months, that recession has then materialized each of those times. And so we're at a point where the economists are noting a high probability of a recession, and so it's something that they're concerned about and, and sharing with the states to help plan for. But one thing to note is that, you know, projections are not predictions, and so the predict, the you know, this is not developed in a, you know, crystal ball. This is something where the experts are utilizing the data that they have available and coming up with projections. Those projections are then updated continually as more information comes in. And so one thing to note is that the state, just like the district, we have more control over the use of funds that we receive, but we don't have that much control over the amount of funds that we receive. And so we'll go more into that in the next slide. Uh, so uh one thing is, you know, of the funds that we receive, how are we spending it? And so uh the former US Treasury of the second, the US Secretary of the Treasury, uh, he views a budget as not just a collection of numbers, but an expression of our values and aspirations. And so what are our values and aspirations? Uh, so it's noted here, we're continually investing in our programs, services for our students, staff and families, and uh continuing to uh recruit to um uh to uh recruit and retain uh high-quality staff. And so those are uh uh what we value and we're continuing to um push towards that. And so with the funds that we receive, ninety percent of it goes to staffing. Um, that's um um, you know, typical for a uh agency that uh that needs people in order to provide its service. We're in a people business and we need, we need people in order to provide uh those critical services. And so what's noted here is just the breakdown of the funds that we receive, uh where it goes, as well as the um uh people we need in order to provide those services. Uh, now across from all of the funds that we receive, um, this is a historical chart of uh where we've invested our dollars. Um, not just in uh, um, not just in um how we can uh recruit and retain staff, but also in recruiting and retaining more staff to provide uh the services to best need, to best meet the needs of our students and families. And so one of the strategic priorities over the past ten years has been to ensure that we're offering competitive compensation to hire and retain high-qualified staff. And so um, one of the things is that we've increased salaries by over thirty-five percent over the past ten years, uh which is uh higher than the statutory cost of living adjustment that has been identified from the state. And so uh one of the things that has occurred is we've needed to continue to review and restructure our priorities uh because of the limited funding that we as a school district receive.
Excuse me, Alan. This is a workshop, right? So I can interrupt with questions as we go along?
Uh, yeah, our process is a little, sorry. Our process is a little more informal in the workshop session. Um, if you have a question about the specific slide, maybe y- you can, but I think it may be better to let them finish the presentation and with questions.
Yeah, I can come back to it. It's fine. Okay.
I don't forget. You just read. Continue, Mr. Guard. Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Uh, so next slide, uh getting into enrollment and attendance. And so uh this is a key met, this is uh key because this is uh what drives the amount of revenues that uh we receive. And so um, this is a slide that uh you've seen before. Um, because the state has, uh, the state is continuing to project that there would be an overall decline in enrollment across the state as well as uh they've looked at individual counties and where um the um uh various changes would occur over the past, over the next ten years. And going to the next slide, uh one of the things that uh we've experienced is that uh we've seen a dramatic decline in our enrollment that is uh continuing to be uh projected in the future. And so just over the past five years, we've seen the size of a decline that is um that matches the number of middle school students that we have. That's the significance of uh the amount of decline. Um, and so um the other thing is that um there have been declines that have been experienced during the pandemic. And so one of the things is that the state has uh had to make a significant adjustment to uh how schools are funded. Um, yes, sure.
Can I ask you a question with previous style uh slide? You had a, can you go back to that? Yeah, right there. That, that's this, this year, which is, why is it in red?
Uh, it says it's in red in order to show that that's the year that we're in.
Okay, so, and then the other ones are showing a reduction more, right? That's projected?
Yes, the um green to the left of the red bar is noting what has occurred in the past. Uh, the blue is noting what's projected.
What might happen, but not, might not.
Correct.
All right, thank you, sir.
Sure. Uh, and so with uh enrollment and attendance, um attendance is how schools are funded. And uh we're one of the few uh states in the nation that uh funds schools based off of attendance and and not based off of enrollment. And so um even though we need to ensure that we have uh staff, textbooks and supplies for all the students that are enrolled, we only receive funding for uh the number of students that attend each day. And so if we get more into the revenues that we receive, uh roughly eighty-five percent of the total revenues uh that we re- we receive come from the state. Uh, and so that's a critical reason why the health of the state's budget is a major impact in uh our own budget. And so I'm getting a little deeper into how uh the major source of revenue uh works is that it's on a per-student uh calculation, uh not on a total lump sum. And so if we're looking at the revenues that we receive uh this year, um, one of the things that's been noted from the governor's proposal is that uh next year, they're anticipating a cost of living adjustment of eight point one-three percent. Uh, this then means that the formula for how uh we receive revenues is going to increase by eight point one-three percent. Uh, but it doesn't mean um the red row where we would just add uh eight percent to the revenues we receive. We do that on a per-student basis and because of the enrollment declines, uh we uh would actually receive the green row, uh which has a big difference um between them. And so uh unfortunately, we're not able to spend money that we don't have. And so because of that difference between um the uh percentages that we would receive versus the uh actual revenue we receive based on um the uh per-student calculations, there is a uh gap in each of the years uh because of that enrollment decline. Uh, if we go to the next slide, um, there are also uh some fixed costs that are associated with um the budget. One being uh what's called step-in column, where uh staff that are uh on salary schedules each year based on um uh experience and growth, uh they move up in the salary schedule. And uh also um for staff, we receive a um um uh they participate in um in two different retirement programs. Uh, one being the CalPERS Retirement Program and unfortunately, CalPERS is uh increasing the um uh retirement rate associated with it, uh which then adds to the fixed costs that we have to account for. And so when accounting for all those aspects, um, the eight percent in COLA that's announced, we're looking at just shy of four percent that's actually available for uh for uh new expenditures. And that drops significantly the year after, uh where uh three and a half percent COLA just gives us, you know, just shy of a quarter percent available. And so in summary, um, uh, we're looking at uh getting more uh deeper into the, the finances. So uh this is a uh chart that was shared at first interim in December um of uh where our finances are for the unrestricted general fund and the restricted general fund. Uh, the green being uh utilized to pay for general operating expenses. And then the uh orange is for restricted, helps to pay for supplemental costs. Um, and so for the um unrestricted, uh when we factor in the governor's budget proposal, um, we see that um um uh there is an increase in revenues, uh which is positive. Um, and that the uh reserve percentage is about five percent for the current year. Uh, that grows to nearly ten percent um uh for next year and then about nine percent the year after. Uh, one of the things to note is that um as you saw in one of the previous charts around uh our uh staffing and and positions, uh that we grew in staffing during the pandemic in order to help respond to the needs of our community. And so um uh that was, that staffing uh was funded from uh different restricted sources. And so um incorporating that into the unrestricted fund uh so that um uh we can uh look to maintain those services. And so that's uh factored into the uh, to the budget for twenty-four, twenty-five.
Can I ask a question, sir?
Sure.
Good, Clerk Ramos.
Hey, can you go back to the slide? I don't understand this. You gotta break it down from like first grade. You got twenty, twenty-three, you got twenty-three, looks like point-six million, is that it?
Correct.
And the next year, we're gonna get screwed. We're gonna lose like five million or five, whatever that is, right? And how do we jump to the other one? How we make it? Doesn't make sense to me.
Sure. So um walking through the chart, uh we start with the uh starting balance. So we started this year with twenty-three point six million. Uh, so you're correct. Uh, this year, uh we would receive two hundred and forty million in revenues, but we're spending two hundred and forty-five. And so that's why there, we're utilizing five million dollars from our reserves in order to maintain the uh, in order to fund the expenditures that we have this year.
Okay.
Uh, and so because we're utilizing um our savings account, then we have less in our savings account uh for next year, uh which is twenty-three, twenty-four. So that's why it goes to eighteen million.
Okay, let me stop with there. How come the, how do we get more revenue next year when according to that projection, we might be losing? How's that happen?
Sure. Uh, so this is um, uh, this is based on um the uh revenues that we're receiving. So we are, there's no question that we're uh projected to receive more revenue next year than this year.
Is that because of investments? Is that because of that?
Uh, no, uh, this is based on um how the state is uh, is um is uh funding the, the formula. So funding it, this is how the state is funding education. So um the state is increasing funding by eight percent. Um, and but we're not seeing that full amount because of enrollment decline. So in, in short, if we had flat enrollment, we would have even more revenues than what's listed here.
Can you explain to the public, I, I learned this the other day about uh how we get money, this district, from attendance, not enrollment? Can you explain that to the public?
Sure, sure. Uh, so we're one of the few states in the nation that uh funds education based off of attendance. And so um because attendance is lower than enrollment, uh there's a uh uh gap in funding there. Um, and uh one of the things is that based off of uh current year funding, uh any uh absence um this year, rega- regardless of the reason, is a loss of seventy-one dollars in uh potential revenue that we would receive. Now, it's completely understandable because we're um in a pandemic and um there's uh concerns associated with uh transmission. Um, uh, but based off of how the state funds education, um any absence uh is a loss in seventy-one dollars in revenue.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Uh, we go to the next slide. There you go. Okay, and so uh one of the things to uh note is to dig a little deeper into the uh restricted general fund. And so uh one of the uh positive things is that um we have received a fair amount of uh one-time revenues. And so these are some of the uh grants, uh large-scale grants that are um, uh that are noted. Um, these grants, even though we're receiving them this year, uh where we have plans in order to um utilize them over the next three to five years. And so that's why um there is a ending balance of eighty-one million dollars because we're receiving the funding, but we'll have uh several years to utilize it. Um, one thing to note is the gray row, uh art, music and instructional materials grant. Uh, the reason that's gray with a question mark is because um, because of the state's uh concern with um and decline in revenue, one of the ways they're actually um funding the eight percent cost of living adjustment is by uh reducing funds that they've already distributed to school districts. And so the governor's proposal is to cut this grant by a third. And so even though we received ten million dollars from uh the state, uh they want to uh, they want us to give back three million dollars because of their budget.
We've already received it?
They've already allocated.
Just a reminder, please.
Yeah. They've, they've allocated, but we don't have it.
Right, they've allocated it. Uh, they've
And they're gonna be sending it.
Right. And now they're
But then they want
give us a portion of it. So, so this is one of the major concerning things is that many districts across the state have plans for the full allocation.
Of course.
And now they're kind of at a standstill because um it's proposed that the state is going to take back a third, but it's not actually uh, it's not actually um approved or, or confirmed that they're gonna take back a third. So now we're at a standstill until the state makes a decision.
Is this general knowledge that's out there? It's, it's just, I'm just like, really?
Okay, so then we're gonna be in limbo.
Correct, correct.
You can't project the future. You can't project, you're gonna hire, because it might change.
Correct.
Oh, my God.
Um, let's, let's, let's finish the presentation. Let's get back to questions. Unless you have a specific question on the slide, uh let's allow staff to finish the presentation.
Sure, um, one last thing uh about this is that um this was a similar issue that occurred during the Great Recession where um the governor put forward a ballot measure that said um that will provide additional funding to education. And if that ballot measure did not pass, then uh school districts would be cut that year uh by a significant amount. And so school districts for a period of six months had no uh way to determine how much funding they were actually getting that year that they were in.
Did you mean happened or happens, you said?
Uh, luckily, the voters of California approved the measure and so there was no reduction that year. But um that was hanging over everyone's heads until that uh vote was tallied.
Thank you.
Uh, and so last slide, um it is positive news that there's additional funding coming in uh through the cost of living adjustment. Uh, but as I uh noted before, that the amount that's actually available is just shy of four percent. Um, and uh because we receive a lot of our revenues from the state, uh, there's concern associated with the slowing economy and um what the state will need to do in order to uh try to continue to prioritize education. And so uh we have to stay true to our values and priorities based off of the limited resources we have while also preparing for an uncertain future. And so with that, I'll open it up to questions.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Guard. Uh, I'll go ahead and just go, go from the board, move down from trustee Rowden here and then kind of around Robin. So uh trustee Rowden, go ahead.
Come back to me.
Uh, Clerk Ramos.
Hey, can you go back to the last slide, please? Can you go back to the last slide yet? Okay, so it says in that last bullet, it says twenty fifteen staffing grew by fifteen percent, even though enrollment declined by eight percent. So what I'm reading from that is we're So what I'm reading from that is we're hiring more staff or teachers, but we don't have enough students to fund it.
Um uh one thing to point out is um we we receive um different grants and different grants uh have been able to uh support different services and programs that we've been able to either establish or expand uh since twenty fifteen. Uh what this is pointing to is um those grants um are temporary grants that we have to continue to renew for. And if the state or federal government decides not to um continue those programs or or approve uh our funding, uh then that has a significant impact on the uh just amount of resources that we would have in order to maintain uh just the uh programs uh that we have.
So then I get from that, what we're gonna have to do is find some other way to get other source of income, right? We're gonna have to do something because those grants have a limited timeframe, a year, two years, three years, whatever it is, and it may be renewable, it may not, right? So we might be in a hole in the future.
Uh right, it's one of the uh different challenge. It it's one of the difficult challenges that school districts uh face where um the uh grants that are received are very much well-intended and and have uh specific parameters associated with it. And so programs are established in order to help uh implement those grants. Uh but then if the uh state or federal government decides not to uh renew, then uh that puts a major uh complication into the services that we're providing.
Last comment. So that other slide, you talked about music and stuff like that. Remember you had a question mark? That means that money can't be used for other stuff, right? It it's scheduled for music or whatever that category was.
Right, there's a there's a various um uh there with each of the grants, they note uh different allowable uses. And so uh um one of the things to note uh for why these are all part of the restricted grant or restricted side of the budget is that um you can spend, you can overspend on restricted programs and utilize unrestricted dollars to cover it, but you can't overspend on the restricted side. Or you can't overspend on the unrestricted side and then use these grants to cover.
I I yield to President Luffy.
Thank you. Um uh in one of the slides, you had the comparison of attendance versus enrollment. Uh and you know, I think um declining enrollments is is kind of occurring all over the place. It's not really always in our control, but um attendance, I think, is, right? And what, I guess, what strategies are we doing to mitigate um truancy uh and making sure that we maximize um you know, our our attendance rate, if that's the way we're being funded?
Uh sure, so um uh we do have an amazing uh child welfare and attendance department. And uh they uh do a lot of outreach to families to um you know, monitor uh whether or not they're um uh the students are attending, um do outreach to see what uh obstacles are in place that uh they could help overcome, as well as the uh uh individual staff at the school sites that uh also provide, uh that also reach out, uh just so there's um consistent communication. And so that um we know that um the absence is, you know, related to someone being sick or or a doctor's appointment and and not just uh other obstacles that um um that, you know, can't be overcome.
Uh and the other one I have here is um, I guess with um with the amount, you'd ma- made a mention that um the decline in capital gains taxes collected by the state of California. Is that exacerbated by people leaving the state as well? Or is that, is that just kind of, is that kind of just been going on in terms of the stock market, mainly the stock market decline?
Uh it would be both because um um you know, living in California and um uh filing taxes by um uh by by California having the progressive tax structure, uh they would be taxed more heavily than if they lived in a in a neighboring state. So for um you know, different high-income earners um that, you know, plays a factor. Uh it's one of the different considerations as why there is a um uh you know, large technical, uh there is a large uh um tech company that moved its operations um to out of state because of the, you know, concerns that they've had with California.
My last thing here, um I mean, since the pandemic, um I think we've seen records amount of funding from the state of California, which is amazing, right? Um do we not expect that to continue? It sounds like, you know, every time you hear the news, there's always a surplus of the state and and whatnot. Um is that not something we can anticipate?
Let's see. If we go to the next slide. Oh yeah, um actually, uh there you go. Oh wait, no, yeah, before. Um and so this is one of the concerns where um the uh the the legislative analyst office that their sole purpose is to provide, is to, you know, dig into the data and provide guidance to the governor and legislators. Uh they anticipated a concern with the amount of revenues that were gonna be collected this year. Uh the governor and legislators uh uh anticipated that that revenue would still continue. And so that's why they developed a uh budget this year that had record spending. And then that revenue did not materialize. And so there is a uh concern with uh uh assuming that, you know, for the past two years, that'll be a trend that'll continue going forward. Where right now, it's it's showing that there's a lot of weaknesses in the economy that would um 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 that would require lowering of the expected revenues to come in.
Uh thank you, Mr. Guard.
Thank you for this overview and for giving us um uh I guess what we can expect and anticipate. I have two questions for you. When will the district present what some of its solutions are? I know there's still a lot unknown at this point, so can you just give us a sense of when you'll be bringing forward um information about how or what the plan is, I guess, for whatever ends up being the financial situation after the May revise?
Uh so um uh this is something that's that is um uh concerning, but we um if we go to slide twenty six. So um it's it's concerning that there's a um slowing economy. Uh but based off of the governor's proposal, there's additional money that um is projected that we would have uh for next year. So uh so we're looking okay for next year. And the concern is uh what do we look like financially going forward?
Okay, and then um forgive my math here. When did we, S R funds are still being utilized this year, is that correct? But they will not, we don't have any S R funds for next school year?
Next year would be the last year of the uh three-year plan for the federal funding that we receive.
And then how do you anticipate that the removal of the S R funds from our budget the following school year then is going to project that three-year? Budget?
Yes, so um a lot of those services, so after next year, a lot of those services are then moved to um the um to the uh twenty five, to the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. Um and so that's um and so um uh it's something that we'll need to continue to look at our uh priorities over the next few years to really determine based off of the revenues that we have. What services can we um maintain? What services can we add? What what can we do with the sort um limited funding that we have?
Trustee Prada?
So the economy of the state of California is the largest. We we have one of the largest sub-national economies in the world. And um the one thing that was disheartening from the CSBA, the California School Board Association um conference, the one of the outgoing messages was for school board members to just buckle down and ride this out because we're getting ready to hit a wall. And I don't believe that's something that we should be sitting down and settling into, um because we know what that sacrifice looks like. We've experienced that sacrifice when we hit these walls. Um so I know I've spoken out as a delegate. Um I would love to see our our full board collaborate with other boards in the in the Bay Area um and hopefully throughout the state to really hold, hold our 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 state to to, I wanna say some other words, but just accountable uh to funding education. Um because this is ridiculous. I also wanted to talk about like how we can be proactive and collaborative. I know that we still have uh things in the works with the seven eleven team, looking at our our the properties. Um I wanted to ask if the district, the city, and the community have been uh thinking about collaborating and um and building workforce and community affordable housing uh along with uh in educational institutions. Um I know that the city has been discussing affordable housing because that's one of the other reasons why we're seeing such a steep, you know, uh uh decline in enrollment too, is because our families can't afford to live here. A lot of our teachers can't afford to live, or a lot of our community, our staff cannot afford to live here, and a lot of them are already commuting uh to work every day. So looking at the properties that we do have, and I'm not gonna go in detail or anything about that. Um I'm but since the city is already looking at this this issue, is there room for us to collaborate and to to get support on how we can, how we can increase our our enrollment by providing us, you know, a safe community, um by providing housing, by providing um not taking away from our educational institutions by shutting schools down, but adding to. Um so these are just some of my my ideas that, you know, we could also bring in revenue that way too and become more sustainable so that we're not helpless to these ups and downs of the state of the state budget. Um so I'll I'll let you answer that first part about the collaborations.
Uh and it looks like we are at uh ten thirty. Uh I think we normally uh vote as a board to extend time. Uh is everyone okay with extending our meeting? Sounds good. Okay. unanimous. Um does anyone have any of their comments uh or questions for Mr. Guard?
Can we?
Oh, oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to respond to the collaboration piece. So we are setting up regular meetings with the city of Hayward um to have some cl- collaborative conversations in terms of our kind of joint initiatives that we can take on uh as an education institution and as a city. So that there's a community effort around the things that we relate a whole important. So I hear housing something that should be on that agenda, Ms. Prada. Um because I I I know that's an important issue for everyone. Um we also are um set starting to set up regular meetings with our local education partners as well. And being that we wanna be an education city, it seems like the partnership kind of convene and talk about what that looks like. So there is collaboration happening. And I will make sure that include housing as one of the agendas that we talk about.
Yeah, and I'm sorry, I was really excited to hop on that because that was one of the things I alluded to. Uh is that housing is a very central topic that is impacting our community, right? It's why people can't afford to own a home uh in the area. It's why people are leaving the state, leaving the area. Um that's why when you saw during the pandemic, you know, you see multi-generational families in the background. You see multiple people sharing resources uh of the computer resources. So uh this just only highlights um the need. So continuing that conversation, I'll I'm excited to to bring that uh you know, future H Slack meetings. Uh but if you are somebody listening to this right now, this is something that we should be holding all of our elects to. Is that we focus on um housing matters in our community. Uh sorry, and anyone else from the board have a comment or?
Um that was just my first question.
Okay.
So I did have another question about like our uh school modifications. Um what is the company that we use for a lot of our construction work and our modification work?
So the uh T R I group provides um um bond um management, program management. And then we um conduct bids to then identify um contractors and architects to then provide uh services. And so for each project, uh that varies depending on uh who's submitted and was qualified to um do the work for the project.
Okay. Can we get an assessment of the work done, um the amount of times that if there's like corrections and the longevity of the spaces and that financial impact um on our budget?
Uh I I I would need a little more clarification on on uh what like, is that for current projects or projects that have occurred in the?
Um I mean, we can go, I say, I I would like to see a pattern. So going back maybe five years or six years or something of that sort, um and current projects. Um I just see a pattern of 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 uh a lot of the construction work not being sustainable. Um and so I just want to know, like, is there, are we seeing a loss there? Are um when they come back in to repair, is it all within warranty? Like, what is the sustainability of the structures that we are building? Um what happens uh when we do have, when we do have a crisis like we did at Wenton Middle School and their construction in this past year? Is there a monetary amount, you know, of uh is there a padding, you know, within the warranty that covers? Or is there an extra cost? Um when things like uh I think flooring um is done and then maybe within a certain amount of time, there's there's cracks, there's problems, there's whatever. Like these type of costs, um is there a way to just get like, what kind of financial impact does that have? And is there a pattern? And then also an assessment of the companies that we are hiring to do um the work?
Sure. So um a couple of quick things. One is um after a contractor um um provides the work, uh the uh architect and um uh representatives from the district then uh walk the project to make sure that it meets specifications. And it's only um at that time uh that the um project is deemed complete and that a notice of completion is brought forward to the board. Um and if during that walkthrough, there are issues identified, uh those issues uh must be addressed before uh the notice of completion is brought forward. And it's only after the notice of completion is approved that um the remaining, it's called retention, the remaining retention of the contract can be released to the contractor. Um after that work occurs, then um depending on the uh type of work, there's um different lengths of um warranty periods. And so uh there's um uh if there's issues that are identified during that warranty period, then um uh then we're, then we go back to the contractor and to uh correct that work and um get that completed. And so both of those instances have no impact. And so both of those instances have no impact to the budget. If if one project is completed and now, you know, two years later, another work, another project is moving forward and is creating issues to the work. So one example is specific to Tennyson with the painting project, but then there was a roofing project that then impacted some of the painting work. The roofing contractor has to, has to redo the painting in order to have the roofing project completed. And so that also has no impact to the budget. It's only after a warranty period expires and that issues occur that we then work to repair and maintain the different facilities that we have.
And I, I guess that's what I'm asking for, that block of, of cost. The, the timeline block? And how much and how many, how many times we get to go back and repair? Like, is that something that is looked at? Or is it such a small number that it's not really worth the conversation? I'm just trying to understand because I know that we consistently have our, our, our school sites and our facilities are not meeting standards as far as as far as providing, always providing a safe and, and equitable environment for our students and, and our community to be in, you know, and so we're in constant repairs at all times. So I just wanted to look at our, be shown the, that type of monetary impact, like because it is something that we constantly have a, a public comments about and and I've brought it up. I, I know that other trustees have brought it up, but I've also brought it up. On, are we hiring the same people over and our same companies over and over again? What's the track record? What happens when you're outside of the warranty? How much does it cost the district to do their repairs? What is that timeline? You know, in the meantime, is there a safety issue? There's all these different things. So I just wanted to have just an assessment.
Yeah. I, oh, give us a statement.
I was just going to clarify the request. Is that okay? And so if I hear you correctly, Ms. Prada, you're saying basically the question is once the notice completion is completed, right? So the project is done, then the question is around warranty. I believe that came before the, the board gave some direction around warranty a while ago in discussion. So I think you're seeing that as part of the contract going forward. But your question is after the warranty expires, is there a cost associated with, with repair? So something that's supposed to last for 10 years, for example, we're seeing it that's broken down by year five. And, you know, if there's a cost associate in terms of repairing the item, once things expire, because I think the warranty aspect of the conversation has been addressed. Because I think the concern was, do we buy warranty for things so that it's not like it breaks tomorrow? And then we're back to having to make that level of repair. So that issue that see a shift already in the contracts coming forward to you. But your question is for us to do an assessment of, are we, are we seeing things having to be repaired over and over again because of poor quality work? Is that correct? Okay. So we can, I'm not quite, we can look at that and see how we can mine that data. Yeah.
Perfect. Are there any other board deliberation or comments or sorry, comments, not deliberation?
Actually, I think a lot of my questions already got answered along the way here somehow. So that's fine. Except I just have one brief question and I guess if you can answer this. So I'm looking at slide 32 and well, actually, I will ask this question. Look, when I go through this stuff and I've read through this stuff about six times since we received the packet last Friday. I, this is not stuff that comes easy for me. So I've had to read it to really digest it several times. When I look back at slide number four and I'm looking at March 23rd, 2022, 23 second interim. And then all of a sudden, May 23rd, it says 23, 24. Governors may revise. Is that a misprint? I don't get it otherwise.
Sure. So and next, at the next board meeting, the current year second interim report. So the current year quarterly financial report will be brought forward. Two months later in May, the governor is going to announce a revised budget proposal. And so that revised budget proposal will have updates to the current year as well as a more of a focus on the 23, 24.
Okay. So it's all a continuum. It's not like one ends here and then a new one begins.
Right.
Okay. That's what I didn't get. The other one was slide number 32. And I'm looking at the art, music and instructional materials grant. So it cuts, cuts by a third. So say seven million. What, is there a language in that that addresses the idea of supplanting what we're already spending for arts, music and instructional materials? Like for example, what we're already paying out. Is, is there something afoot to like supplant instead of enhance?
Yes. So not in the art, music, instructional materials grant, there, there's no supplant item, but specific to proposition 28 that voters approved in November. That's funding that we would receive on an ongoing basis beginning next year. That has a specific set of requirements around not, not utilizing this funding for expenses that we currently have. And so it would be for
So this is not that?
There are two separate ones. Proposition 28 is different than the art.
Okay. I just assumed that was it.
Oh, no.
No? Okay. Never mind.
Okay. I think this, I think we've talked about this topic for a good amount of time here. And I think we've gotten given, you have another one? Okay. Yeah. No, I, I have one more thing. Um, I, I think another thing that I, I think our board would like to see is, are there any creative sources for revenue, right? I think creation of revenue streams for our district is, is important because somebody had mentioned that there's going to be a lack of revenue coming out, right? Things that other school districts do is, you know, having scheduled fees for facilities usage. Some of them have gyms and they have memberships to the community to attend, you know, gyms at our sites or whatnot. So I don't know what that looks like, but I, I think our board would be interested to see what creative revenue streams that we could create and with the current research that we have. Trustee Ryan.
Yeah. I just again, want to point out the performing arts center, when it's done.
Yep.
Of course it goes to our HUSD students first. But that could be a total source of revenue for the district.
Huge. Perfect. Okay. Well, we do need to move on to public comment here. Ms. Rodriguez, any members of the public wanting to comment on this?
Yes. And I need two points of clarification. I'm looking for either the, there, I heard two RFIs requests for information and needing to clarify if there's board consensus on the two. Trustee Prada asked for an assessment of about five to six years by vendor failure frequency after warranty, life expectancy versus actual performance and the financial impact for repairs. And you asked for creative sources for revenue.
Board is, how do we feel about those two asks? If you guys want to separate them out or you guys go ahead and give it. But please keep it brief. We do need to get to.
I just want to ask a question to staff if either of those are burdensome in any way, or if it's something that is within the realm for when you bring back the budget next time.
We would likely need more time for, for both items to be brought forward. And for the facilities analysis, we can look at the, the bond measure work that has occurred recently and then what's any corrective actions that have been needed and whether that was based off of that, whether that was covered under warranty or, or any potential impact associated with the budget for it.
Do you want to have an opinion on these? Yeah, I, I think it does sound like word direction, but I don't, I mean, I think given all that, you know, that you're tasked with. I think it's, you know, whenever it is necessary to provide that report, it's, we'll, we'll welcome it. So I don't think it's, needs to be coming to us immediately. So thank you.
Thank you. Charles Jones.
Hello, Charles Jones, Tennyson High School Social Studies Department Chair and key rep. So I've taught econ for years. It's something that I enjoy doing. I just want to remind that predictions are not like, predictions are based on a snapshot in time with data provided and not set in stone. Quite often they change with updated information, just like our surplus committee has changed because things change or the COVID revenue boom that we saw when we thought the economy was going to tank. So as dark as things might look, there's always the chance that we might end up better. I read through the budget report audit that you had a lot of pages. And in one section in the look forward, it said that a recession doesn't look likely. And I quote, defense spending and technology demands will keep the economy growing. Also that TK expansion will grow our numbers, expanding funding. So I just want to say there is potential for us to have a soft landing from this. The info provided on slide 18 does have me concerned because it talks about how over 10 years, we've increased our compensation by 35% over that 21% inflation. But what it leaves out is that we already started below the cost of living in this state over those 10 years. And that increase was still less than the inflation each year that we saw, the last one by 2%. So yeah, it, we did raise it, but that's not the full picture of what's being said. So it kind of feels like the data is being set up to justify like a cuts to teacher staff to keep class sizes up and to keep compensation low, which is what we've been demanding the opposite of. When you guys cut, we have to pay for it in our classrooms. I spend a lot on like food for students. The other fact is, is you got $10 million for community schools. Those are supposed to be small class sizes and fit the needs of the neighborhood. So this budget should reflect that. Otherwise it's very concerning on what that $10 million is going to go towards. Like we're better now than we were two years ago. We should be reopening those small schools to match what we promised with community schools. That's what we were elected as stakeholders to do. And that's what the board was also asking for with that, not mega schools like Cherryland. Thank you.
Daisy Bates.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. Daisy Bates, AYOD president. AYOD and SEIU, your classified employees approached the administration in a coalition effort to negotiate health benefits relief. The administration said no. We propose a contribution from the district to the lowest paid district employees. And administration came up with a slap in the face type of counter proposal. If you get an increase, they say in salary through the me to clause provision, you can divide what you get some in salary increase, some going to your healthcare benefit. A slap in the face indeed. Insurance plans offer preventive care that keep employees healthy and working. If employees don't get preventive care and yearly physicals, which they might not do if they don't have insurance, you could end up having more employees out for long periods of time with serious illnesses. Many AYOD and SEIU employees do not have health insurance. They prefer to pay the penalty and then they do not get preventive care. I will give you some personal stories and a Yori member, a single dad of two, two children have three jobs to pay 1,400 in health insurance for him and his children. His HUSD salary covers only rent and food. He works here. He works at an athletic department at a local university and on the weekends at the Oakland Arena in order to afford healthcare. Another member, a single mom pays 686 a month for her own health insurance. She needs an operation soon that will cause her out of pocket, twelve to 14,000, and she cannot afford it. The surgery is to prevent a potential cancer diagnosis. So here we have real personal stories, unrealistic and disrespectful counter proposal from the district. And I would like to invite the board to attend budget forum so they can understand even better and hear from us, the workers in HUSD to see how the budget really looks like. Hello, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes.
Okay. Hi. Good evening again. This is Roselio Rosco. My comment with this, it'll, it's just be, and here we go again with another presentation, a budget presentation. The district has had a really bad reputation transparency and honesty and, and and also making promises that are never kept also, not only for students, but for staff too. What I've seen over the years is just more and more, more, and I've been here for almost 28 years. More, more, more money, but less, less performance and less accountability too. One of the other things that I wanted to also say is that I'm, I don't see the same district personnel presenting solutions to all the, the, the problems that are the budgetary concerns that they're commenting. They're not coming with solutions and that's something that I would like to see. You know, once again, there's no trust in, in these personnel, you know, doing this finances, you know, we see more hiring, more, just more district personnel and giving raises and, and all of this and and not go in our budget, not going directly to services for our children. You know, one more thing, you know, we also need to look at, at truancy, you know, attendance, you know, find out why our kids are not going. I mean, I could tell you a couple of reasons why, you know, and, and, and district personnel knows about this, you know, kids don't feel safe going to school. And that's something that needs to bring up and, and, you know, attendance, why their kids are not coming to school. One of the reasons is because they don't feel safe and, and it's something that we need to.
Carmen Espinoza.
Ah, yes. Hi. Can you hear me? Okay. This is Maria del Carmen Espinoza. You know, I, I was talking to some parents actually yesterday and today regarding letters that they've been getting because their, their kids are not going to school. And then I, I found out that it's because they have to get tested. If they go home or they don't feel well, they have to take a COVID test. And then they have to take another one 24 hours later. Then they have to submit it to the HUSD nurse. And then the nurse has to give clearance for the students to come back. So sometimes they're out of school the whole week. Sometimes they're out of school for however many amount of days. They have to be out of school at least two days because you have to wait 24 hours, right? And so because you have all of these steps implemented, the students, if they go home on a Monday, sometimes they don't go back to school until next Monday, which is because we're waiting or we're taking tests or just, you know, by the time Friday comes, the parents are like, why even send our kid, why even send my child on a Friday? If, you know, they're going to go on the weekend or something. And so I know we've all done it. And so that's why I feel like you're not getting any money for attendance because a lot of these rules, if my child has a stomach ache, it doesn't mean that she has coronavirus. And so I think that we have to figure out another way on how we can send our kids back to school the next day and not have to wait three to four days. Also, why, why are the, why do some employees have health insurance and others don't? You know, they are the, they are the people that make everything go. I mean, I don't understand how they do not have health insurance. It's ridiculous. Thank you.
Mary Vazquez.
Yes. Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Rosemary Vazquez. I'm the family engagement specialist currently working at Cherryland Elementary. And it's interesting that I chose the budget. I'm definitely not an accountant. But one of the things that I will like, and I will request to really take a look at is sustainability. We have amazing programs that have come and gone. We have excellent people establishing a lot of success on some of the programs specified for our African American. uh, specified for our African-American students and specific, and then we wash it out and do not can, continue. Um, we let our money kind of slip away when we need to. As part of the implementation is sustainability. When you buy a car, it's not only the vehicle who have the down payment, how wonderful. But can you pay? Can you afford the insurance? Can you afford the maintenance? Can you afford this? Can you make sure that you can maintain that vehicle? And so we need to look at it in that perspective. So with the new um, uh, funding that we have for community schools, which we have had in the past, by the way, um, we do need to make sure to please make sure that it stays. And the people that really care about the community have the strength to continue. I run a food distribution that's been since May seventh of two thousand twenty and is still running. We stopped the other ones. Why? Sustainability, the understanding that our community needs. And every little piece of bread that we give to our families are come ten times full in terms of volunteers, of people that are giving back to the school, that bring these kids to school to live with us. Thank you.
Are we that?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, go right ahead.
Thank you. I will encourage you to please look into the budget to provide healthcare for all of our staff at school. Happy employees, happy students, happy family. Please, I encourage you to approve for a medical for our staff. Thank you.
The floor.
Uh, and that concludes our budget workshop. Um, so thank, just want to thank the public again for their comments. Um, uh, we are going to go ahead and move on to uh, the remaining balance of our consent agenda. Uh, the two items that were pulled were G six and G ten H, uh, starting with G six. I believe that was pulled by Vice President Dr. Kenda.
Thank you. I just need to recuse myself because I'm one of the chaperones for um, an item on this agenda.
Okay. Um, I guess with that, I'll go ahead uh, and move this item. Would anyone like to second that?
I'll second.
I don't think any deliberations necessary here. So I'll go and call for the vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Abstentions? We have a four zero one vote. Dr. Kenda abstaining. Uh, motion was moved by myself, seconded by trustee Prada.
Pointing for the record, it's a recusal.
Recusal, sorry. Uh, item G ten, G ten H, uh, safety center. Um, that actually was pulled by myself. Just give me a second to pull up the item. Uh, G ten H, I believe the vendor is called Safety Center. In one second, I'll pull it up here and then I can make any comments. So I actually, uh, uh, I come from this uh, industry. I, I teach first aid and CPR outside of this. Uh, so I actually know what uh, the fee schedules kind of look like in this industry. I think it's pretty comparable, but one of the things I think, you know, we always need to constantly look for is strengthening our positioning in the context that we have with our vendors. Uh, one of the things I wasn't sure and I want to make clarify is that um, sometimes one of the models that these companies will use is they'll pay and charge uh, organizations per slot. Uh, and I want to make sure that we're paying per student, right? So sometimes they'll say, we'll have four classes with twenty slots each. And if only five people show up, we're still paying for twenty people. Um, I would like to make sure that we're paying for the amount of students that are getting certified in first aid and CPR and not just for slots. Uh, because it is a way for companies to make a little bit extra, um, you know, if people aren't able to make the attendance. Is that an amendment that is, uh, that we can write into this contract? Uh, I'll let staff answer that question.
Uh, sure. So um, a couple of quick things about the contract is that um, the vendor was recommended from our uh, insurance carrier. Um, they provided several um, services that were uh, covered by our insurance carrier. And then based off of the uh, outreach from the District Safety Committee, uh, there is more um, interest in, in holding more sessions. And so uh, with these sessions, there's uh, twelve slots for each session. And um, we can ensure that um, a session won't move forward unless we have those uh, twelve slots present. And that um, the uh, current contract is uh, to be uh, up to thirty sessions, but it's not a requirement that we hold thirty sessions. Um, those are two things that are uh, easily done. Uh, and then going forward, if there, um, we can provide more clarity um, and um, having that um, per student attendance basis and, and not just the open slot basis.
Perfect. That's good enough for me. So um, yeah, I just, just a reminder, you know, whenever we do go over these vendor contracts, making sure that H Hayward Unified does always come out um, in a better position. And we ensure our liabilities is always, is, is key and important. So um, that is something. Uh, so I'll go ahead and move that item uh, based on staff's um, response to my question. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh, seconded by Vice President Dr. Kenda. Uh, we go ahead and call for the vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? Five zero passes. Uh, moved by myself, seconded by Doctor, Vice President Dr. Kenda. Just item J, returning to the general public comments for items not appearing on the agenda. This fifteen minutes is a continuation of non-agenda public comment to bring us to a total of one hour. This is available to those individuals who did not have a chance to speak during the non-agendized public comment section at the beginning of our meeting. Again, this is for subject matters within our jurisdiction that were not on tonight's agenda. Uh, do we have any public speakers, Ms. Rodriguez?
We do. In person, Zoe Benz and Sabra Dupre.
Hi, I am a student and I'm at Wharton High School. I am a senior and I wanted to speak on the case of antisem- Semitism that's going on in my school. I wanted to speak on the document that's being used, the Hidden Tyranny. And I don't think that it's okay that we are allowed to use books that have the N word in it or um, speak on slaves or any other race that is degrading in any manner. But we can't use a material as Hidden Tyr- Tyranny if it's not used to promote, promote antisemitism to, to the students or teach it to the students. I don't think that should be a problem, especially if it's not in the lesson plan to promote that, which I don't think has been gone over with the people who have brought this up. And I think it was really unprofessional that student, students and teachers have been discussing what's been going on with this to come to the board and not even go through our administration when the administration has been taking action. But instead of them actually discussing with administration, administration, they went around them and decided to come to you, which I think is completely unfair. And me being the child of said teacher, it's really disheartening that the teachers that have been discussing it to their students didn't think about how it would affect me on campus as I am getting weird looks all day and I can hear people talking about me behind my back or just treating me differently because of this whole situation, which I don't think is okay. That they were allowed to talk about something that shouldn't have been spoken about in class to have people come to this board meeting and speak about it. I mean, if they really had a problem that it shouldn't have been something discussed outside of the classroom with all the teachers that have a problem with it, it's been spoken to them instead of bringing it to other people. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment tonight. I know it's such a late night, so definitely appreciate that. Thank you.
Sabra.
It is, it's really late. And um, my name is Sabra Dupre. I'm a parent in HUSD and um, I kind of wanted to piggyback on Sarah. Um, I'm really disappointed tonight that there was not something presented for Black History Month. We already lose a week because of President's Week. And I feel like if there was going to be a presentation for next month to display what happened in this month at certain sites, we should have did both. We should have had a presentation and then a follow-up next month to show what actually happened. Are we gonna have the same treatment for Asian history, um, Asian um, Heritage Month, um, Indigenous, um, Polynesian, all the other heritage um, cultures? I would assume and I would hope that that's going to be the same treatment because then that wouldn't be looked at too well for the district. Um, secondly, um, I just want to understand the why. We've been in this district for a long time. Some of you that I've seen, position after position after position. And yet we still have families coming here saying the same thing with inappropriate language to our students, especially our black students. And I'm just trying to figure out why is this still a problem. It, it's not that hard to fix something. And we keep hearing the same thing from our board leaders. I'm not going to name anyone because I don't want Ms. um, uh, Rodriguez to cut me off, which happens all the time. Um, we keep hearing the same thing. Um, you know, we've heard it before. This, 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 um, this, this matter, it takes time. And it doesn't happen overnight. We keep hearing the same thing. It's like literally, parents are pressing a button to re, to replay every single year, every single, i- it's, it's just disheartening. This is a problem that needs to be fixed. And it really doesn't take that much to handle it. So I think we need to do more investigating and actual our board leaders need to actually go to these school sites and stop just sitting here. Um, and just kind of like pushing it away like it's gonna go away. Thank you.
Rosemary Vasquez.
Good evening. Um, this is Rosemary Vasquez, Family Engagement Specialist at Cherryland Elementary. Um, I wanted to uh, request um, to please really consider providing medical insurance for our AOTU members and ACIU members. I've been working at um, for the Hayward Unified School District, going on about.
I'm sorry, uh, point of order. I, I think that was an agenda, I believe that was an agendized items.
I'm so sorry. I apologize. I came in late. I, I recused myself. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, the floor.
Hmm, um, that brings us to item K, future agenda items. Trustees are there featured in items this evening. Not already queued up that we'd like um, for the board president and interim superintendent to consider in agenda planning and development sessions.
Uh, I think already, I don't know, I haven't had an update on, on when it'll come back, but uh, the state of black students in HUSD was one of the agenda items. Um, and then I think uh, the other one was making our governance calendar like a living document. And I don't know if that's coming up in a workshop or if that's going to be an agendized item or not.
Thank you. Anyone else have suggestions for future important um, agenda items?
May I just ask a clarifying question? The governance calendar, uh, do you mean, uh, can you say more about that one?
Yeah, I think um, interim superintendent, uh, Tenru Fernandez was going to reach out to Tahoe Unified School District to get more information from the conference that we, uh, the three of us attended, that session about um, about the calendar being agendized, like the, the structure, the way, in the way that that district, um, the, the way that district does their calendar and um, prioritizes different um, items. And there's more input from the whole board and making it more of a living, a living document. We talked about it a little bit in, uh, in our workshop on the twenty-fifth, but I think we're going to get more detail on that and have like an open discussion. Um, and having it be a bit more collaborative, uh, and, and also, you know, with it being a living document, with nights like tonight, it prioritizes what is really impacting the HUSD community. And then we go i- into discussion and then put it, agendize it onto the calendar. So I think you were going to be looking into the way that uh, Tahoe Unified School District had um, has been doing that and um, getting more information on, from that session to present, to give back to the board for another discussion.
I can answer the questions for Ms. Prada. That's okay. Um, so in terms of the first item that you brought up, Ms. Prada, um, I think the discussion was that, that will come back at the next board meeting at the same time that we do the A bar update, a mini year update for the board. Um, the second item is actually in, in progress. Uh, we, I did locate the notes from that session that we all attended. So it outlines the process a little bit. We will be diving a little deeper with Lake Tahoe.
Okay.
Um, and then we can, I can certainly discuss uh, with our, our president in terms of structure, in terms of item. Or, um, because we had the workshop, we talked, also talked about that being possibly a workshop item. So we can work through that based on what we find out from them.
Thank you. And with the first item, um, I just want to request that it's not just a data fed type of um, item as far as uh, looking at the stats of black students in our district and looking at the programming that is currently in place. I would like to uh, make sure that we are reaching out to uh, families, stakeholders, that they have a voice. And um, and so I don't know if it's going to be ready for the next board meeting, but making sure that we have uh, listening sessions, that we have collaboration from the families and the students in this process and that it's something that uh, when we do build solutions, there's a budget to back the sustainability of the support that we build for black students in the district. So.
I think we imagine the presentation being three parts, right? We are, are, we are going to be dealing some data. We do have some strategies that we put forward already, um, that addresses some of the concerns, um, in terms of the, and where we are in the implementation of those strategies. That was promised in the A bar board policy in terms of regular updates to the board. So we do want to honor that commitment. And then I think that what you're speaking to is the next steps in terms of outlining next steps of how we move forward. That could include strategies, that includes community voice as part of that. And potentially, uh, what I think uh, Dr. Kenda also talked about in terms of the restructuring of the EOC committee with the, which is the Equity Oversight Committee, trying to think of the exact acronyms, um, will be embedded in that presentation as a part of our next steps in moving forward.
Thank you. Uh, anyone else? And I just want to reiterate too, my first meeting with um, interim superintendent with Fernandez, that was a priority of mine. And a part of the reason why we did that site visit today with you and, and making sure that that does come up to us. So it'll come to us for the A bar and uh, I do look forward to that to come in front of us. Um, our last or, I guess, second last item here is item L for the good of the order. Uh, would anyone like to say something for the good of the order?
Yeah, I'd like to say something.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
I want to address our black students. I want to say that you are loved, that you are seen, that you are valued, that your humanity is not to be questioned and that you have people that are fighting for you. Um, that we see you, that I see you. And I know that it's hard sometimes, but I just want you to know that you are loved, deeply, deeply loved and you are valued.
Thank you, trustee Prada. Last item here is uh, sorry, it's not last item, second last item. Item M, future meeting dates. Um, I'll go ahead and announce this for you, trustee, uh, for Ramos. Our next meeting is March first, uh, which is a closed session meeting item. Uh, there will be no session, no open session and no regular business. Uh, and then our next regular meeting is going to be March eighth. Uh, that is a regular meeting uh, on Wednesday as well. Um, our last item of the night uh, is item N. Uh, and I do want to close this meeting uh, in the honor of our late supervisor, Richard Vaya. Uh, the time is.